...call this, uh, public hearing to order regarding the relocation of the Tarpon Voting Precinct. Note for the record that all members are present, including County Attorney Mr. Phillips and County Administrator Mr. Moore. Uh, at this point, I guess we will open the floor up to public comments regarding the, uh, public hearings regarding the moving of the Tarpon Voting Precinct.
Mr. Chairman, can I, for the record, make a statement as to how we're proceeding today?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, due to the coronavirus pandemic and emergency declarations of the governor, uh, this meeting and the subsequent meeting that we'll have this afternoon is governed by Executive Orders 51, 53, and 61 of the Commonwealth of Virginia. In those executive orders, particularly the most recent one, 61 mandates that no more than ten individuals, uh, be allowed to attend a meeting, a live meeting of this board, as required, uh, by that executive order. Consequently, no more than ten individuals from the public can attend a meeting. And six feet of spacing is also required by Executive Order 51, 53, and 61. Uh, as a result of the pandemic, the, uh, board is also, uh, caused of the limiting of attendance of the public is broadcasting, uh, live streaming. Uh, this, uh, meeting tonight, this public hearing tonight, and it is being livestreamed via the Ferguson County Network. In addition, there is two-way communication that exists. Those in the public can comment on this public, during this public hearing via the, uh, the two-way communication telephone. I'm sure the chairman has a telephone number that he can later give the public to allow them to participate. And finally, uh, Mr. Chairman, the board also allows individual citizens to provide, uh, via the internet, their comments to the clerk of the court for this public hearing as well as for the, the meeting coming up tonight. And those comments from the public will be either read into the record or made a part of the record, uh, to make sure that this board does comply with the open meeting requirements of statutes and, uh, freedom of information requirements as required by the statute. So it's the intent of this board to comply with all statutes regarding the freedom of information and open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And it's the intent of this board to also follow Executive sixty, Executive Order 61 regarding as to who can attend and how many can attend. And this board, uh, recognizes, I believe, that there's no more than ten individuals who are here tonight and they're spaced out, uh, six feet apart. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And I would say for anyone watching this public hearing portion of tonight's meeting that you may call two seven six three 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 zero three five seven if you desire to make a comment regarding this ordinance, which would move the, uh, Tarpon Voting Precinct. If you wish to make a public comment via telephone regarding that, you may call this number, two seven six three 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 zero three five seven. And then I guess, uh, Mr. Parlementary and Mr. Lawyer, uh, Phillips, Mr. Phillips, we will go to the public comment portion of this public hearing now. So if there's anyone here physically present that would like to make a comment, you, uh, please just give your name, address, and you'll be limited to a three-minute portion to, to give your thoughts or opinions on this subject. And I'll open that floor up now. See, Ms. Sweeney's here, I don't know if she wants to speak or not, but if you'd just come, just wherever you're comfortable in this area here will be just fine.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, this public hearing, uh, is regarding a proposed change in the ordinance, uh, dealing with a voting precinct. And if I recall correctly, the board, and you may help me, but I believe this is dealing with the Tarpon.
Correct.
Precinct. And the, the issue here is, uh, the reason why there is a proposed change in the voting precinct is because, uh, the voting precinct is not ADA-qualified or does not have ADA facilities, as Americans with Disabilities Act. The federal law requires that a facility that you have for voting be ADA-qualified. If it is not ADA-qualified and have ADA facilities, then you're out of compliance with both state law and federal law if that doesn't exist. The second issue that, that, and in fact, because an emergency situation is my understanding, and I've spoken with the Registar, it does not allow compliance with Executive Order 61 of Commonwealth of Virginia. Executive six, sixty-one requires proper spacing, uh, uh, allows, uh, individ, so many individuals in the voting, uh, in the voting block during the time. And, uh, it's my understanding that the individuals who work that precinct say they cannot comply with Executive Order 61 to make a coronavirus acceptable and comply with the governor's order, executive order. That's why we're having this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, thank you. Yes, ma'am, you, uh, three minutes, Ms. Sweeney.
Yes, I would just like to ask each of the location layers, um, I just feel that, you know, there's nothing on that side of the county. And I, I just ask that, you know, that, you know, help them at all ways possible, each of ours. I know Miss Willis, I mentioned before that they had a David Hurst precinct. Um, and I think that they're getting ready to move, again, maybe or trying to relocate. I just think that there's other ways out there that, that should be able to update these facilities. Um, there is a, um, a little porch area, flat slab that's only half the building. I don't understand why they can't just, uh, maybe put up and build a shelter over there. The bathrooms, it's not a problem, there's bathrooms, it's right in there for, you know, when they go to work, they are, so they.
Quarter potty.
Yes, the quarter potty. Um, and quarter potty today knows, I mean, everybody knows that there are lots more, uh, nights than what the outhouses used to be, so. Um, and I just ask that you try to, your best to be able to leave that precinct there. There's a lot of people that live over in the mountains and, um, including myself, I'm six eleven. And, you know, it's farther away to go towards Tarpon. I almost feel like there's other agenda here too, in, in order to try to get this moved to the Tarpon area. I think the truck shop may need some renovations or something, and this is the way, yes. And I think too, we live in such, Dixon County is such a political field here too. And I think too that this has got something to do with that. So I'm just asking, is the tree, these topics, keep our precinct where it's at. And I think that number, um, I think it's number seven, number seventeen, that just had an order to adopt, should establish family election districts and stuff. I think that right there is, you know, my first one, the bottom front. I mean, I just, you know, I just ask you, you know, to take this into consideration. If this was in your district, we do not comply to try to, if your district were it out, your voting code. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, physically present that would like to make comment on this? Mr. Phillips, I'm, Miss Willis, the, I guess she was talking about the ridge. County owns that building though, don't they?
They own our building, but my thing was to go back to Long's Ford.
Yeah, I know you're gonna go back to Long's Ford, that's part of seventeen that she was talking about.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what she's saying that we, I don't know, but.
I guess that was what she probably listened to the live streaming last week when we made a motion to, to don't get the.
Your precinct back to Long's Ford, but I guess the difference is.
No, can't until twenty-one.
Well, right.
Until I do some more research.
Let's see, Chris, if I may, Chris, uh, you heard Mr. Phillips open there. Have you done measurements in regards to this building? Could you maybe give an update from the building inspector's perspective on what you found in regard to the measurements of the facility? And what's required by the, this, Americans with Disabilities Act?
Well, there's, there's a couple of problems here.
If you want to stand up, I don't know if they can hear you on, maybe if you get closer, I, thank you, thank you for coming.
The slab that is beside the building, just a little bit near to the ADA, the second floor. Uh, then, uh, parking and loading turners, that would have to extend to a bit.
So you gotta have like a, 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 a solid surface, I guess?
But it's dimensions, what it's not like.
Okay.
Uh, inside, if there was no privacy issues, just did everything against outside laws, have a, a turner, if you can, if you can meet ADA requirements and stuff. But they have some privacy issues that they won't see voters to be able to go behind the little table, so they can cast their, fit their vote in privately. They haven't got your machine. Once you take that, then you have to pull that out, so you have to buy the turner as in idea, then buy the turner as in front, then you're in our states. If it wasn't the privacy of the building, they, being that inside, you had to increase the parking space. You could get an ADA-approved, uh, quarter potty outside. And it would need some work done to make everything, uh, quieter accessible to the quarter potty. And that's what adds to the, uh, voting area, I would think, accessible parking slots. So the privacy and the ADA, if you did, which is the reason that building is too small.
And it's my understanding, Mr. Wright, you and Mr. Kendrick done a little research in Poole. Do we know who owns that property? I mean, who actually owns that building?
Yeah, originally was a school property. And best you might remember, my memory, uh, Lehman said that the school had deeded it to the county at some point. He'd done a massive search on that deed, finally found.
So the county does own the building?
I don't want to quote that, but that's my understanding.
Okay.
It's my understanding.
How much it owns.
Cause that's wasn't, cause that wasn't what was told to me.
How much it owns, I passed the building, I don't know.
Okay.
It may just be the footprint of the building I have right there.
Thank you. Sure, yeah, go ahead.
I, I didn't have papers, um, of, 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 I was speaking about with the school one house, the church and whatever. And you didn't even have to get those copies for you and get your, get your, if you were a voter, so I didn't have copies of all that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Kayla, you, yeah, please.
Um, I would speak in addition to what Chris was talking about, the privacy issue with the voters. There is a code section that requires that anything in a precinct, even prior to COVID, that, like, for instance, when you walk in and you check in at the check-in ta, table, you go in, you show your photo ID, they mark you off on a poll list. That station is supposed to be four foot from where you go on to receive your ballot. Again, that's supposed to be four foot from your voting booth. Every voting booth that is required there for Jack Tarpon, by law, they are required to have two. Because as of this morning, they have five hundred and twenty-three registered voters there. We are required to have one voting booth per four hundred and twenty-five, so we have to have two there. Each one of those voting booths are supposed to be an additional four foot apart. Now, in the past, the reason this issue has just come up, if you will, in the last, uh, couple of years that we've been working on trying to get this done is because of the fact that the legislators wanted the paper trails, we were switched to all paper ballots, which meant we had to get an additional machine, which if any of you's been in our office, and I know all of you were in November, and the monthly nut to it, you have saw the size of these, these machines. These machines, truthfully, one of these machines would make up the size of two of the old machines that we used to have. The voting booths themselves are the same size as the old voting machines we used to have. So we're sending a voting machine now that they feed their optical scan into the, the size of the two voting machines they used to have, plus two voting booths that's required to be set up, that's the same size as what the other voting machines would have been. We have people up there that's in a wheelchair, and it has really started bothering, uh, the guy who used to serve as chief there. Because since we have switched the machines, this individual has been in a power wheelchair and cannot navigate the room. So what has to happen when this person comes is they, they take the room, you know, they check him in, they give him his ballot. He doesn't actually move from the check-in table. And then when he's done marking his ballot at the actual check-in table, he has to turn his chair, feed it in the machine, and back out of the room. This is disenfranchising on this thing. We've called him and offered that he could come to our office for accidentally voting, when you go to the car, he wouldn't have to get out. He doesn't wanna do that. He's entitled to go to that precinct just like I'm entitled to go to mine, and you are entitled to go to yours. And he doesn't feel like he should give that up, which I agree, he shouldn't have to. You know, and then the other thing that COVID has complicated him, but just like he said, he said that we're sixty-one, there is no way. I'm already looking into the state board elections. My four primary poll workers that would go up there have done told me, absolutely not. I will not go set up there fourteen plus hours and not even have a sink that I can go wash my hands in. And yet you want me to use the sanitary solutions that the state board has sent down, which has to be mixed with water and clean every hour. But I don't have access to hot water to even wash my hands. We tried to work out with the church that they would give us a fee just to let our poll workers go over, or they'd come and open it up. It would not be open to the public, and it would only be for them to use the restroom, wash their hands. They didn't want that. They don't want any part of it. They feel that there should be the separation of the politics and the church. So that's not an option at this point. So we are looking at the fact for June that right now, as it stands, I do not have any poll workers to stand up there for the June twenty-third primary we have coming up.
And what happens in that scenario?
In that scenario, what the state board elections have told me at this point is, if we had exhausted all possibilities as far as hiring poll workers to go up there, then we resort back to that precinct for that election, we'll have to have an emergency move to a nearby precinct, which could be the North Flintwood precinct, because that's in that district. They may tell me we would have to go to the Clinchco precinct. So basically what they said is we would have to evaluate the distance, mileage-wise, they'll go by which way is closer.
So as it stands now, it's going to be basically shut out anyway.
That's what we're looking at, because I mean, I have nobody that will go up there. I've had people in the past that wouldn't go back because they wasn't comfortable with having to go out and use the quarter potty. And like Chris said, there's really no good place up there to put one. Uh, we ran into the issue that they said on the concrete pad one time, well, if we had the ADA person come out that day because they have listed as the handicap parking spot, we would have been in violation because the quarter potty was there. So we had to contact the company and say, hey, y'all put them there again. Well, they put them over to the side, across the way there, and they went, it poured rain that day, and poll workers saw me, and said, the water's pouring out of the quarter potty, we can't even go in.
What's that cost per election for the quarter?
Three hundred and twenty-five, because we had to go up to get in the ADA.
Does the county pay that?
Yes, the county does, yeah. It's in our budget that you guys pay it.
Mr. Chairman, if I can to, to, uh,
Kayla.
Uh, to revisit the issue of the coronavirus. Executive Order sixty-one requires spacing and sanitation at all voting locations. And I have a document, uh, here that I can pass around to you that could be, should be made part of the record from the Department of Elections. And they have opined and giving their opinion. That is, if that precinct does not have the appropriate spacing and sanitary conditions, uh, they, they will have to, and no poll workers will show up, they will have to move the polling place on the day of the election to one or three locations.
Yet it's possible if it doesn't go to, like, the North Flintwood or the Clinchco precinct, it will come here to our office and be handled at the back of the building. Now, how that will happen, as far as this building is still on lockdown at that point, we'll have to figure that out as far as handling the voters, because there will be no way. A typical election up there for November, which I supplied Mr. Phillips with this morning, the numbers, we are well over two hundred and a half, been or covered right around two hundred, every November since two thousand and eleven up there. We've been at, uh, two hundred and ninety-six voters. Presidential election, this is gonna bring out a lot of people, everything going on. I, I don't know how in the world we can ever comply, and, you know, if you wanna build onto that building, if we can find out. The last that I was told from Lehman was he had found a ninety-nine-year lease. That was the last that was held committed.
In that, all right.
And I don't know.
Ms. Sweeney, of course, adamantly wants this lift open, and I, it's my fault that we didn't own it, but that's news to me here now.
All right, I had asked Lehman while we were sitting here, because I, I didn't wanna go on record with it being rough and correct. The school board owns the property.
The school board owns?
The county has the lease, and the county is the one that constructed the building that's on the side.
Okay.
That's the arrangement. And it's one of those, I believe it, I believe it was like a ninety-nine-year lease, I, I don't know that it has a term.
That was the last I was hoping with Lehman for eleven, nineteen ninety-nine.
But that is, that is the situation with that.
Well, to have water and to have restroom without having to rent a quarter potty, are there any place accessible to, for sewer and water?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I guess that's a question for Chris, because I don't know what all that involves. I mean, I know you have to have a certain, or even Ron, you know, she did subjects for so long.
Oh, there is a, there is a, for a government entity, you can do pump and haul. You can't do it for a residential, uh, but for a government entity, you can do pump and haul. That would mean putting in a septic tank with an alarm. And I don't think they use, would be using a lot of water up there, or the, but I don't know their water uses. I know there's available public water there. Uh, but you would have to have, I don't know how much land they own there, because you couldn't put that on, you, you could put the septic tank, it has to be ten foot from the building with the pump and haul. Uh, that is the solution for the, for the water and the bathrooms perhaps, but it sounds to me like you got a problem with space.
Well, you know, ultimately, we do have a problem with that. There's no way you can go up there right now without a building on. David Pollers had went up there with us at one point, but wherever we came to the board the first time was last year. And we had tried to look around, David had concerns about going out towards the road that comes up, like, towards White Ridge Carryout because of the slope, and in fact, he said he did not think that it could support. Uh, he felt like the only option we would have was to be turned over on the concrete pad, which he spoke of. But then, at that same time, we're gonna have to create another ADA-compliant handicap pad. And he said, you know, to make that one ADA-compliant, like Chris spoke about with the van access, would be a whole lot cheaper than going in a whole new concrete flat. And I guess the ultimate thing about building on would also be to know how much land does the school own, where does the church land start? You know, because I guess that would be the other thing about. And then you're talking how much money? Because once we start renovating, as it is now, we move to the truck shop. We do not have to make the bathroom ADA-compliant. The bathroom is already there. And technically, on election day, we do not have to supply a bathroom for the public. We only have to supply one for our poll workers. Now, what the state board said is, if your bathroom is not ADA-compliant at that precinct, you cannot ask somebody with a disability to work in that precinct, because that building is not compliant for them to work there. But if you start doing renovations, then you have to bring the bathroom up to ADA-compliant. So if we start renovating that building, adding on to it, expanding, however, outside ways, backwards, whatever, we're gonna have to be ADA-compliant. How many thousands of dollars are we talking there? I know David Pollers has prepared an estimate of like twenty-two hundred to move us to the truck shop. And that's just one head of it, in the bathroom and everything, right there. The only issue that is there that has to be fixed now to relocate the precinct there would be like the doorway, to make the doorway. Uh, it needs to be like a packed-down surface. I actually have packets for the new board members that may not have had a packet from last year. This was the packet that we presented to the board as the pictures of the inside with the dimensions. When we took the wheelchair, I've been navigating around if anybody wants those.
Thank you. Does, does anybody have any questions?
It just seems to me that they don't know how much land they own. Chris cannot issue a building permit on land. It has to have a survey plat from the health department.
Well.
Could you, you have to establish who owns the land in order to?
Technically, no, we're very wanted to be on the house, is that very to make sure that that's here properly.
Yeah, but he has to buy up the health department and have a survey plat, and before you can issue a building permit.
Mrs. Lewis is correct legally on that, she is.
So I don't know, it seems to me that, I see this estimate here. What, what estimate would it cost to make this, to come into the Tarpon that's there now at Mount Olive? What, what, how much would that cost? Nobody knows, nobody's trying to estimate that.
Is there enough space up there for?
That, yeah, that was the whole up there, that's when David Pollers went out with us. That was the initial thought, when he went out with us, let's go up there, let's look at it, see what you say you can do, you know, build on, ban, that kind of thing. And then the whole issue arose just really quick of, well, who even owns it? Can we even legally build onto it, or are we gonna be on the church's land, or whose land? We had no clue.
Well, I think, this is just my opinion, just to have done our due diligence, I would ask to maybe, once, of course, we're in the public hearing portion of this, so we're not really taking action anyway, but my desire would be maybe to ask Chris and David, Lehman, other David, possibly discern how much land is there and do an estimate of what it would take to be ADA-compliant and do restroom facilities. In that way.
Septic and all that.
Septic and all that, and, and, and that way we have concrete numbers, and we've done our due diligence, and we can, I mean, that's my.
Well, doesn't most of the, it's not my precinct, so, but I'm still concerned. Doesn't most of the population that vote, you wouldn't know that, but if it on, out next to Mount Olive instead of the truck shop, maybe Mrs. Sweeney knows that, she lives there.
How far would you have to travel, Ms. Sweeney, to go to the truck shop from where you live?
By car.
You don't have many minutes or whatever.
By car from the truck shop to the Mount Olive precinct is four point seven miles.
About eight minutes, it's about, because I drove it today, because if you're there at White Ridge Carryout or Mount Olive, and you head straight across Big Ridge to the truck shop, it's about eight minutes. Is that right on the minimize?
That's from where I live, I live over in the mountains, down close next to the kids' area, so I'm driving a little bit further. And, you know, so, but, you know, and I also take my mother, who is elderly, she's been a sad woman. And, I think, I can take her there and wait for her to vote and stuff, and get her back to the house before I got to come into the door. So it's, it's a little bit difficult for me to be able to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I thought I could sort of have one final comment. Even if you go out for all the due diligence that you're talking about, and that's the board's prerogative to do that, based on what I know and understand about state election law, it is very possible, if you even leave it there and you wanna construct it and do the construction work, that they may, and it's not finished by election day, they will have to declare emergency, and that polling place will be moved. There is no question about that. And so my best, my best legal opinion is that, based on this coronavirus sixty-one, uh, executive order, if it is not lifted, and, uh, based on that spacing, my best legal opinion is that the state board will require them, on an emergency basis, move that to a different location. And those folks down there consequently won't be able to vote there, they will have to go somewhere else to vote, based on state law.
And Mr. Phillips, in your opinion, the liability we would face potentially from a, any potential ADA lawsuit? I mean, would that be a significant risk?
Yes.
Should we not do anything, I mean?
Yes, it would be.
Mr. Evans, I have read some of the law for all the voting, I think, the voting movement stuff can also be moved outside, with someone watching it. So I, I feel like on most that even if it comes down to an emergency time, that it could be moved outside. You know, I understand that we probably have to be a covering member, but they can move it outside.
The issue with moving outside at this point is the fact that we are on paper ballots. This was not our decision, as David can tell you, we were given no choice. The legislators kept saying, well, we're gonna implement this year, this year, this year, this year. We were looking at an implementation a year and a half from the time that it happened. Basically, they came to us in August and said, hey, your machines are decertified as of today. By November, you will have these new machines. And David can tell you, we were, with him, countless, I was in his office more times than I care to admit, saying, okay, now this is coming up, this is coming up, you know, and if these paper ballots give the lease a little bit moisture. I mean, we even have to have the moisture, um, readers, I'm not sure what they're called.
Humidity, something to check the humidity.
Yes, and we keep a dehumidifier in our office, because you're talking, if these ballots give the lease a bit damp. I mean, they've even told us with hand sanitizer. A precinct ran into this issue at a special election a couple, three weeks ago. And of course, with the COVID, they were, you know, practicing, trying to, good hygiene, personally used hand sanitizer, got it on the ballot, didn't think anything of it. It popped, it evaporated. It jammed our machine, it was a fifteen-hundred-dollar fee, and that machine was out of commission for the rest of the day. So there's so many things we have to be.
Kayla, you was talking about two voting booths. Could you leave one of those outside, cause probably you're just gonna need one anyway inside? Would that give you any more room?
It's not gonna give you much more room at all, and the problem you run into there is you start moving your forty-foot out. If you move any kind of the election equipment out, you've moved your forty-foot out. And if you start putting that outside, the building, you've moved the forty-foot radius of what anybody's allowed to be at the precinct, hanging around. So you're into the road, you're over the hill on this side, the backside, there would be no way to watch it. I mean, I, I'm not gonna be able to come up, poll workers are gonna sit outside, I'm not working out of that. You're talking in November, going out there at six AM, setting in the dark till seven-thirty. You're talking in November, going out there at 6:00 AM, setting in the dark till 7:30 a.m. If it's pouring in the rain, then we're going to have to have a tent rental. And we can't just put up a tent. It's going to have to be an enclosed tent that can keep the equipment safe. I mean, these machines are $10,000.
Thank you so much. We'll see if, if we got a call, I'll get to the caller. And again, I'll, if I can find the number here. The number, if you would like to make a public comment
333.
in regard to the, to this public hearing in regard to the Tarpon Precinct, the number is 276-333-0357. You a loser?
Shows that she's still here.
Well, if we get her back, we'll let her go. I mean, if she comes back. Chris, I mean, I get you, I know you're not prepared for this kind of question, but I mean, one of the septic systems, like Ms. Lewis was talking about, I mean, how, what kind of number is just off the top of your head? And I mean, I know you can't.
That's just basically a tank, I mean, running through the high, uh, low, high water level zone after the, after the usage, the sundown reach.
Okay, so it's sort of you were disconnected then, when you wouldn't use her? No?
It, it, it was only during the election, you would assume groundwater would be going in after the election. After, after the election, you can't clean it. You have the, uh, safety, you wind it, wind it, and then turn it, clean it out and be great as a man's cure.
How expensive would something like that be?
You're talking about over $1,000?
Oh, yeah, yeah, probably up to $3,000.
Well, it's septic tank and the alarm, and then to have it pumped out. So I'm, I'm just talking about the, then you got to install it. So you're talking about maybe $2,000, $2,000, $3,000.
Do we ever get the caller back?
And I'm being able to deal with, what I tell everybody, it's like California, they go, please, you feel him for it, you got to manage.
Does anybody else, we're off your six now, so I don't know if any, any board members have anything else on this. Is there anyone else here that'd like to make public comment? Okay, now I entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor of adjuring the public hearing in regard to the moving of the Tarpon Precinct, please say aye. Aye also. Public hearing is being adjourned. David, would you care to lead us in prayer, please?
Sure. Bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together again during these difficult times as leaders and as citizens who care deeply for our county. May we seek your wisdom in our decisions and in our comments and, and, and just try to do everything for the betterment of the greater good. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Peters, you care to lead us in prayer, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this parliament for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number three, the adoption of the minutes regarding the April 28, 2020 meeting. Have everyone had time to review those minutes?
If there's no corrections, I make a motion we adopt them.
I have a motion to adopt those minutes. Do you hear second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of adopting the minutes as provided, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Now, item four, I heard Ms. Willis talk a little bit about. Do you have any additions you'd like to add to the agenda? Maybe I misheard you.
Well, you know, that coal-roading guys person, I think we have to name three people to the judge to choose from for Teddy's position that's coming up in June. And you all were having an emergency meeting in June, aren't you?
I believe so. No, we had one, we already had one.
No, our next meeting probably won't be scheduled until either July or August.
So will we have time next month then to make that, those recommendations?
I would think so. E- even if the judge didn't seat someone until the very end of June or the first of July, we probably are not going to reschedule another coal-roading meeting until August. That, that'd be my best guess.
Okay.
I would like to have more time to.
And I would really like you all to, I mean, we've had, I think, I think we've had one letter submitted that I've seen, and I'm sure there are other names, but I, I think we should put some thought to it because that Coal Road Committee is, is really important.
Yeah, we got.
So did you receive a letter from the person that wants to see it?
I, we received one.
From it, from us?
One, one letter from a, from an interested party.
The person sent it to him.
All right, thank you.
So, well, that's.
So we can, can that be put on the agenda for June?
We actually will. And I would think in the meantime, between now and that June meeting, it would be good to have a list of names for consideration. And then at that meeting, I would, I would want to formally put together the list that we would like the judge to receive from us so that he could have that.
Yes, I agree.
Can I have also, next month, maybe a hearing again on Longsford after I asked Mr. Phillips to look at, when we did the redistricting, I had four districts. I had four precincts in my district. I had Longsford, West State, The Ridge, and I had four. Anyway, at that time, I had, uh, West State, I had a whole, I had, uh, Longsford was in there. This board, and I believe I'm correct, if my memory serves me correctly, we had never, ever voted to do away with the Longsford precinct.
Far as I'm concerned, you could have anything on.
It was just closed due to the fact that the building was closed when Ridgeview opened. But when we redistricted, there was four districts. But I think that the treasurer's office took it on themselves to change everybody to The Ridge. Because I don't believe this board voted. I'm going to have Teresa look back and see.
Ms. Willis, if you want to add that now as an addition to talk about, I'm happy to allow that.
Let's just wait till next month, because I still have plenty of time.
You do.
I want him to look at it.
The, the issue here is twofold. Number one, there is a prohibition by law that prohibits the cause redistricting come up, to move, uh, to consolidate, uh, out these particular.
To divide a precinct.
Yeah, yeah. You can't do that now because of, of, and they don't want to re-map, re-move people around after a certain time. And that, that they have passed a statute that says, no, none of these matters that, that she's talking about, I believe, if I recall correctly and reviewing the statute, that that may not be done. Now, the question is, I don't know, now, that, that the, if I, my memory serves me correct, the electoral board can make certain moves on their own without board approval. And that may have been, I don't know, we'll just have to look at.
Well, the building disappeared.
No, it didn't disappear, it just closed.
You know what I mean? But we're going to have to readdress it. But I'm not, I'm not, and Shelby, I'm not against you on this. I just, I mean, we got to, it's right things.
However, you want to bring it up, however, we can do it.
I want him to look at legally to see it. We have to make that decision.
I'll be glad to do that.
Is anybody, is everybody okay with the agenda as presented? Do we need any additions or subtractions to the agenda?
No, there's a few things in other business, but we can just do, they're all mine. I was just going to do them one by one, but I don't think they formally have to be added to the agenda.
So here, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, do you hear second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Thank you. Uh, David, can you give a treasury report?
We, uh, we, where our meeting is bumped up and treasurer's office is going through, uh, collection window. Uh, we do not have our April treasurer's report yet, but we would hope by the June meeting, maybe we could have both April and May. But, uh, so I don't have, I don't have anything to report for April as of now.
David, did you, uh, give any consideration to reopening of the facility here?
Yeah, I was going to cover that as.
As other business?
As part of other business. I, I'd like to talk about, you know, with the governor coming forth with phases and, and new guidelines.
That's fine with me.
Uh, I'd, I'd like to talk about it.
Yes, sir. Okay, uh, move on to item six then, expenditures.
If there's no questions about the expenditures, I make a motion that we approve the general county fund, enhance the 911 fund and the coal and gas road improvement fund.
Are there any questions in regard to the expenditures? I know we're moving quick, but I, we've got to sort of start, so I'm just trying to get through, uh, some of the normal stuff.
Unless I had a question, I went overall mine.
I'm sorry.
I said, unless someone has a question, though, I went overall mine. They would.
Any questions, Ms. Kyle?
Customer in ordinary.
So we have a motion to approve expenditures here second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the expenditures, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Uh, item seven, uh, Virginia Freedom Information Act, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chairman, the Virginia Freedom Information Act is an act that requires openness in government and allows individuals to have access to certain documents that they may petition to receive. And it's intended in order to keep the public informed and allow the public to have access to certain documents and information that, that is permitted by law. As a part of that act, the Virginia Freedom Information Act, I am required by law to give you a copy of that. And that's why we're doing that tonight. And I, I believe we got it straightened out and have that on your, on your desk and has been, all members have been provided a copy of the Virginia Freedom Information Act. So the law requires me to do that.
So you don't need any action on that then? Okay, well, move on to item number eight. I don't see Mr. Edwards here. I know he had sent an email asking.
He had, Teresa, have you spoken to him like this week? Neither have I.
There is some people still standing outside, they may be out there.
I see Eric up there, but I don't see Toby. Jeremy, can you see if Toby Edwards is outside, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Well, I think. Well, just to kind of fill that in, Toby, Toby has been working with us with, on the user agreement. Mr. Phillips has been part of that, I've been part of that. I, I'm going to assume that part of the discussion was going to be about that. But that, that user agreement will not be in front of us until June. So unless Toby calls in or, 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 you know, happens to show up this evening, of course, we would allow him to speak then. But otherwise, we'll, we'll bring him back for the June meeting so that when we.
On the user agreement, make sure we got the other document too with it that they keep referencing in it. Because there's a plan of operations that's referenced several times. You know, because we should review all of that.
Right.
I'll see it Thursday.
All right. But I'd say just move on. If he happens to show, we'll, we'll integrate him whenever he does. If not, I'll make sure he come, he's back here in June, I'll talk to him.
Uh, going to item nine, I see Eric was coming in. Add to the agenda, and Eric was invited, I think, by me, but I think everybody wanted him here to sort of.
We talked about having him come.
Talked about having him come, and I'm glad he did. I know he's got a family and a job, and so I appreciate him making the time for us this evening. And Eric does, uh, he's an engineer, uh, and he does a lot of this for a living. Broadband work, I think you are in, in West Virginia right now. So he's an expert, and I just wanted him to give us some guidance and, and really kind of give us a blueprint of what we need to do to get internet service to our communities.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
Um, one other thing I'll say, this man is our point of contact to sit on the committee for residential internet service with Point Broadband and Cumberland Plateau as well, along with Susan Mullins. That's, or Point Broadband has two members in our community that they picked themselves that they, that wrote for that, that committee as well. I just wanted to point that out. So if I had to pick the person for internet and the county, this guy is doing it.
I appreciate him being here tonight. So go, I'll give you the floor or whatever.
Mr. Evans, I appreciate the, uh, time and, um, just so that most people, I would guess, know me, but just in case you don't, I'm Eric Price. Um, I am a member of the Dickens County Industrial Development Authority, um, probably on that. And as we talk about broadband, I think that is a key driver for economic development. Uh, so I think those two go, go hand in hand. I am a, um, project manager at Thompson and Litten. You know, I'm not wearing that hat tonight. My institutional knowledge of broadband is part of my job, so that's what I do. I've, I've been working the last two years to get broadband connectivity, uh, in the state of West Virginia. Presently working in about 24 of the 55 counties in West Virginia. And as I've done that, and I have a lot of drive time, I think, you know, what are we doing for Dickinson County? You know, Dickinson County needs it as much as a lot of these counties that I'm working in in West Virginia. And here I live, and I've got good connectivity, but I know a lot of folks don't. So, so with that, and if you'll, if you'll humor me just for a, for a moment or two, I thought I would just briefly, uh, give you a, a, a quick history of broadband in Dickinson County. Some of you may know it, some of you may know part of it, some of you may not know any of it, but at least it'll put us all on the same page as we look to the future. Because it's my opinion that broadband is the utility of today as water was in the 90s. And we worked hard, Mr. Phillips, you know, a lot of that that went on, a lot of folks around this table to work to get water, uh, clean, good drinking water to our county. It took a long time, a lot of effort and a lot of, a lot of, a lot of collaboration. But again, you know, I want to see Dickinson County grow, and I think broadband is a key component of that. Maybe the number one driving force behind the economic development and growth of Dickinson County. Just a brief history of connectivity in, in Dickinson County, which is pretty common across southwest Virginia and across the Appalachian region as a whole. You have phone service that has been around for years, Verizon, the whole thing. Basically has connectivity to every, every resident in Dickinson County that's got access to that landline. But as the need drew, that copper infrastructure, that copper plant has, has just fallen by the wayside and it won't carry the signal that's needed to carry today's, um, needs. Most of us have been working, uh, from home here lately, doing a lot of Zoom meetings, teleconferencing, and we know the importance of that. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But then you've got Comcast, cable TV. They have done pretty good in select areas of maintaining their plant, upgrading their plant. Uh, and if you're like me, I've got Comcast, I've got, I've got great service. But it doesn't reach everywhere. And in a lot of places, you, you can't get that connectivity to, uh, to, you know, just 100 feet away from where their cable is because of the costs associated with doing that. In the, um, early 2000s, mid 2000s, 2006 to 2010, Cumberland Plateau, British Virginia Utilities, Virginia Coalfield Coalition was really the very first one to, to bring in what's called middle mile fiber. That's basically your main trunk line, that's your main pipe. And the very first project that came in this area was a Coalfield Coalition project, which is Cumberland Plateau, Winnewisco. And it originated in, um, around Bluefield, came from Bluefield to Hansonville, uh, to Wise, Payon, and terminated, uh, in Clintwood at the pop site, um, here in this industrial park. That's where it terminated. Then subsequent projects carried, carried that, that middle mile fiber to Hayside, you know, down Route 80, uh, over to Brakes, you know, all, all those areas that we know where Point Broadband, which is the, the, I guess who owns it now, currently has that fiber. But we also know that the goal of that fiber was middle mile fiber. It was to get point A to point B to point C connected. The goal of that immediate project was not to get you or you or you or me hooked up. It was to get connectivity to the communities. With the plan of then expanding that to last mile. With the plan of then expanding that to last mile and getting the last mile connected. Uh, BBU never did do that. They got a lot of, of businesses connected. So fast forward a little bit to, uh, to two thousand and eighteen, a document that's near and dear to my heart, um, is the transaction between CPC OptNet, OptNet, BBU and the transaction to Sunset Digital. Sunset Digital Communications is a firm that originated in Duffield. Uh, they did a lot of work in the Winnebago area. Um, so anyway, they got the fiber assets. Um, and one thing I would just like to point out as part of this agreement, and, um, we can talk about this later if you want to, is that Sunset agreed to invest their own money in the Cumberland Plateau region to, to further, um, broadband connectivity. And I quote, "Sunset acknowledges that it intends to invest its own money, including the new connection commitment described below, uh, for either operation maintenance or capital expenditures specifically to fund increased residential connections." And then further, um, Sunset committed to the Tobacco Commission to invest $10 million in southwest Virginia. And the Tobacco Commission agrees that $7 million of that commitment be directed to new connections in the Cumberland Plateau region. So again, that was in two thousand and eighteen. Um, and one thing that I would, I would challenge is, you know, our residents or our representatives on the Cumberland Plateau Board to, to see, you know, whereas, where is Point Broadband at on that commitment, uh, to the Cumberland Plateau?
What was the date signed?
Uh, it's August of two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah. And a year after that, they were supposed to have invested 1.5 million and a hotspot. The hotspot's the only thing that I know of that's been installed in Dickinson County. And that was several months late, past that one year deadline.
I will, I will add that, that Ron did indicate, um, that I am a, I am a Dickinson County representative of what's known as the, um, the CPC OptNet Connected Home Advisory Council. Um, that, that council has met three times. Uh, the third time that we met, it was a skeleton, uh, group, and that's been well over a year ago. So that group's not met.
Well, one thing that I was gonna add here, cause I, and I want to derail you in your mission here. I think that we as a board need to send something to Cumberland Plateau to ask where and what's being done in this county.
Yes.
Well, I was going to ask you as our rep, and you and I have talked about this for years.
Yeah.
Evaluating how this seat, this, this planning district group has worked so far, I see a lot of inequity in how it's been applied. I know that we have worked with Point on trying to get certain grants, but it seems like we've always fallen short.
But, and I guess I'll, I'll jump forward to, to the conclusion of where I want to get to. And then I'm going to come back, cause I, I think this is important so that everybody understands how we got to where we're at. Yeah, I think Dickinson County's got to be vocal. I think you need to be adamant.
We have been.
And I think you need to take a strong stance and it needs to not be in voice only, but it needs to be some, some muscle behind the barking that we're doing, some bite behind the bar. So, um, if, if I can, I mean, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions. I'll stay here as long as you want me to, but I also don't want to, uh, to keep you any longer than I have to.
Uh, Mr. Price, I have talked to Comcast. I've talked to several different people. And I finally got to one person that says they are not interested in expanding anything in Dickinson County. They're only going to work where they can hit several hundred at a time, like in towns.
Yeah. See, it's all return on investment. Okay. So it costs money to connect.
So our only hope is Scott County and Hillcom, I think.
Yeah.
Because I do not think Point Broadband is going to do anything in Dickinson County.
All right.
How much money did you say that they committed?
1.5 million, I think.
No, it's a beginning, seven million.
Ten million in southwest Virginia, seven million in Cumberland Plateau.
But that's for four counties.
How much has been spent on?
But we got four counties in the Cumberland Plateau.
Yeah, I know. But how much has they spent of that seven million?
You need to ask.
Well, I'll.
We have a meeting Thursday.
Go ahead.
Well, don't we send Cumberland Plateau so much money every?
So.
What are we getting for it?
So once, once BBU, once BBU did their network, uh, we all kind of understand what happened with BBU and all that. Subsequent to that, after that, Scott County Telephone has gotten a couple of grants. Um, Ms. Wells, you know a lot about those, Sandy Ridge, Candy Ridge, I think Smith Ridge, Big Ridge, and in the Hayside. So Scott County Telephone Co-op out of, uh, just outside of Gay City, um, has expanded. So they have connectivity. And in some places, it's probably some of the fastest internet that's going right now. I'm talking about gigabit speeds, true gigabit speeds, if you want to pay for it.
Yeah.
Uh, the capability's there, but you, in, in order to get those speeds, it is a higher tier and, and, but it's, but it's there.
But it's there, right?
Yeah. I mean, and.
Desperately people that's working at home and doing business at home. It's the higher ones. I'm about 25 and mine's real fast.
Yeah, gigabit speeds.
Do you hook down Scott?
Not necessarily. You don't need them right now, but, but that will become a thing.
They came down our ridge, but they didn't hook everybody up.
They will.
They didn't come out my ridge. They will.
So after that, and, and I guess, uh, there's a few people that were, that were part of the transaction from the, um, the asset that Dickinson County owned over to Hillcom. So once that transaction took place, Hillcom basically took off. That's Dickinson County's own internet service provider. Um, and, and they've grown and they are now providing service to approximately 800 customers in Dickinson County. Um, it should be known that they purchased service from Point Broadband and Scott County Telephone Co-op. So, you know, you've got to get that source from somewhere. So if they're getting it from, from.
Yeah, county purchases from Point Broadband, I believe.
In some places, but they also go straight to some of the internet exchanges and get it at wholesale rates as well too. So, um. So most recently, and I asked, I asked our Economic Development Director, uh, Minsey Sykes, to, to put something on Facebook. Hopefully there'll be something in the paper tomorrow about it. But the IDA and Hillcom partnered for a much needed project on Honey Camp. Um, and, and I just want to show you kind of how some things can, can happen. Um, Ms. Willis, I know you've, you've been, uh, working to try to get service there and it was unsuccessful.
That was who, that was who I called Comcast about.
Yeah. So the return on investment wasn't there. So we worked through the Tobacco and Endemification Fund. They've got a special last mile broadband, uh, full of money. And in March, just to show you how rapidly this actually progressed, in March of 2019, we made application for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to do a wireless project for approximately 40 customers on, on Honey Camp. Uh, the project was awarded in June of 2019 and I'm proud to say that as of today, uh, there's 25 customers connected.
Oh, great.
And if you talk to them, it is, it is mind blowing at the difference of what they, they had versus what they have now. And that's a success story. And I think we all need to be proud of, of that and the synergy and the, and the partnership that we worked to get that. But that's just a small piece of the puzzle when we talk about Dickinson County. There is lots of those little pockets of 40 customers here, 20 here, 60 there, that we need to get service.
Yes, that's why you're here.
So as I've worked in West Virginia and I'm working plans, you know, we understand that it's all, it's all about the money. Okay. If, if it were, if there were a return on investment, Comcast, Verizon, Point Broadband would be out doing this left and right because they would get a return on their investment and they, they could get it to cash. But it's not. The rural America is falling behind because of the sparse population density in these areas. So you don't get like a, you know, a subdivision where you may have 50 homes in a little small footprint. You know, that's, that's some, that's a pretty good change there that you can, you can get that turned over. But when you have to go five miles between two homes, you know, there's some, there's some extensive cost there. So I wanted to just point out a couple of, uh, several funding opportunities that are available. Uh, Virginia actually has quite a bit of money that's set aside for broadband. Uh, so, so the first one is through, Department of Housing Community Development has what's called the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative, VTI, VTI. And that pot of money for fiscal year 2021 is 34.7 million dollars. And that's limited to the Commonwealth of Virginia. And if you don't apply for it, you ain't going to get it.
What sort of, um, on these applications such as that one, I know you're going to give us some more, but what, what in regard to like details, in regard to the infrastructure or the, I mean, because that's where we, or me especially, I mean, I don't know what.
So, so the VTI program, and I'll, I'll just tell you, and I've got it highlighted from the application guide. Applications must be submitted by a unit of government, town, cities, counties, economic development authorities, broadband authorities, planning districts, school divisions, with a private sector broadband provider as a co-applicant. This program, as does the tobacco program that we were successful on, the public body has to be the applicant.
What's required in the application?
Okay. So you have to, obviously you've got to have a plan. The VTI program actually wants you to have it almost shovel ready. Where it needs to be designed, it needs to, everything needs to be in order.
So do you actually have to have it engineered? I mean, all engineered?
These projects, telecommunications projects are, are a little different so that you don't, they don't actually require professional engineering certification, but it does need to be progressed through the partnership of the internet service provider and the public body. You know, that's basically where you come together, the public-private partnership to, to determine how these things come together. But yes, you've got to have plans, not as detailed as like a water, a water plant or something like that. But you've got to have plans, you can have cost estimates, you know, all of that information to back up what you're doing. Number of customers, potential take rate. So unlike a water project where you pretty much are going to have a hundred percent connectivity, pretty much, on a, on a, on a broadband project, you may not have a hundred percent connectivity. So that's what's called a take rate. So you typically will look at about a 60% take rate. So you, you plan for, you may pass a hundred, a hundred homes, but you plan on 60 of them taking the service. And that's how you, that's how you do your, your pro forma and you put your, you put your, your, uh, cash analysis, uh, on that.
But doesn't your provider partner normally go into that community and house to house?
Right, cause other ones would have gained from it.
Yeah. But that's what's going to happen to the customer.
Right. So case in point, so the Honey Camp project was a hundred and thirty thousand dollar project. And we kind of, we kind of did that as a little test project. Let's put our toe in the water and just see how it works. Hundred and thirty thousand's nothing when you talk about some.
Right.
I mean, um, you know, here's a 1.5 million, 1.9 million. Those are the awards on the exact same one that we got a $65,000 grant, because it was a 50/50. So Hillcom partnered with the IDA. The IDA applied for the grant, got 65,000. Hillcom says, we'll provide 65,000, but we'll do it through an IDA run. So they actually borrowed money from the IDA, the 50% match. And now they're paying that back. And they have plans to pay that back in about a year and a half with the funds that they've already started generating.
And there were several of them.
And then once that's done, the IDA owns the assets. We own a tower. We own the electric equipment. We own the equipment on the homes. That's the IDA's equipment. But the IDA is not an internet service provi-, uh, business. So we partner with ISP. They maintain it. They upgrade it. They do all that. They do the troubleshooting and they get the revenue. So that's, that's a true public-private partnership where we are the public body, being the applicant, getting the funds, turning around and partnering with the private.
And it's a home run for all three, the customer, the government and the corporation.
And in this particular case, it's really a win-win because it's, it's our own, it's our, it's a business that's located within.
Right.
And that's, that's.
And our concern, our concern was getting into having, having tower ownership and those type issues. But in working with Hillcom, basically they will do all the maintenance. We may have to provide a generator. We may have to, we, we work with them because the tower forces the hub for the entire system. If the tower fails, the system will fail. So based on prior history, we're working with the county and, and, you know, tower maintenance is not easy. You have to have the right credentials. They don't have a sit back there. It used to be one of our sources by DC when our guys. We don't have to take the building, nor does the IDA, to keep them that on stack, but a Hillcom or a Scott County do.
Yeah.
So you, you further that partnership through that tower. And see, they've got a lot of incentive because without the tower maintenance being done, they lose their customer.
I don't want to steal any of your thunder, Eric. Um, so if you still got things to say, I'll.
Just, just real quick, there are, with the, with this COVID-19, a lot of light is being shined on broadband connectivity in rural America. Okay?
Yeah. Well, I heard Ms. Robinson say they're, they're having to consider putting the internet on buses for crying out loud.
So, so for, because of that, because of that, funding at the federal level has never been greater and I expect more. I'm talking about, to the tune of the IDA has got 1.5 billion dollars that's, that's directly part of the CARES Act. And if you reap that, broadband connectivity, getting, getting people connected. Um, the USDA has got money that just continues to flow. And I, I really think that there's going to be more and more money. Here's my thing. Not only do you need to be aware of what's out there, um, you need to be doing something about it. Partner, help with the IDA, with, you know, your own initiatives. But here's my thing, and I'm sure several of you have heard me say this numerous times, but Dickinson County needs to be the controller of Dickinson County's destiny. We don't need to be letting everybody else tell us what we're going to do and what we're not going to do.
Especially with our own money.
That's what we've been doing on our projects. So case in point is, you know, the CPC Point Broadband project, you know, we've been waiting and we've been hopeful and we keep thinking, great, there's $7 million that's going to be invested in Cumberland Plateau. You would hope that to be split evenly between four counties. Probably not. But at any rate, there should be investment being made. You should, we should start seeing stuff. But we're not seeing anything. So we, you know, I, I, I urge the county, I urge our representatives, and I urge myself as an IDA representative, to find out why and demand better. And beyond that, let's take it upon ourselves to do more Honey Camp projects. I've got a, I asked, I asked Kenny Hill to provide me a, evidently I'm not being heard online or something, so I'm, I'm buzzing there.
But this is a microphone, so.
Oh, you're good.
But, um, I asked him, I said, I said, Kenny, I know that you've got people that are calling you saying, I need service. I need service. I don't have anything. I need service. I said, just, just tell me. I said, where are they at? And I bet you, I could go right up to you and you could tell me exactly where they're at. Skeet Rock.
Yes.
The Greenbrier, um, uh, Drainpipe Hollow area, Lit Creek, Tramut, and then Pound River south of the mountain. And that, that's, that's that whole area.
Lot of place going on those other places, Tim. My next question to you, Eric, so let's say, I, I mean, I'm, I'm here, I'm the Will's District Representative and I'm just dead set on giving internet to Skeet Rock. Well, if my first step to call Kenny Hill up and say, listen, let's ride through Skeet Rock or let's do what? How do I start a Honey Camp? Like you've been, how do I start that? I mean, how do I get that going?
Where, where do my Dickinson County IDA have? And being a Dickinson County lawyer, I would say, yeah, absolutely. Call up our, our internet service provider and say, can you get service there? And if he can, then say, well, what can we do to get service there? Can we partner with somebody else? Can, can we, can we partner with you to run the fiber from a tower? What can we do and, and let that project grow there?
Well, based on your knowledge, what is available, say, in an area like the Lake Road where it is fairly populated, but it's still, I guess, like a secondary road? Or is there fiber in an area like that? Or what is available in an area from, say, Clintwood to the, to the marina?
In, in some places along the, maybe the Lake Road, and I'm not saying how far, you've got, you've got cable TV. And cable TV did a pretty good job back in the nineties, eighties and nineties picking up those major arterials within the county, you know, the, the main roads. And then in some cases. And then in some cases, going up some of the, if they've got some, some population things, need to pick those up. Beyond that, if it's not on eighty-eight-three, sixty-three, seventy-two, um, there's no fiber. And, and Sandy Ridge, Candy Ridge, you know, Scott County stuff. What I would suggest doing, if you really wanna paint a picture of what's served and what's not served, is either hire somebody, do it yourself, work with the Hillcom, but get a map that the win dates what's served and what's not served. When I do this work in West Virginia, one of the very first things that we come up with, so that we know who's served and who's not served, because when you, when you, when you work the funding applications, you better not try to fund an area that's already served.
Right.
Because they'll throw that application out quick, because that's another. It's all about unserved. And unserved at this time, I don't give a weed, but basically it's ten-one service, ten megabits down, one megabit up, but for all practical purposes, it's twenty-five-three, which is what Ms. Will's was talking about. That's the gold standard for broadband at this time. But I challenge Dickinson County, don't, don't shoot for the mark today, let's do better. Let's, let's shoot for fiber connectivity, let's shoot for one hundred meg service, because if we shoot for twenty-five-three and shoot for the benchmark today, ten years from now, we're gonna be behind the, behind the bottom line. So if we wanna, if we want Dickinson County to grow, and we want to use broadband as a, as a key to make that happen, we've got, we've got to do very well. We've got to plan it, and we've got to execute it.
Eric, I, excuse me, Eric, I called Osborn Gap, is, you can catch Jacob, you can get, uh, you can get internet. So very much you leave Cape Jacob, um, Kathy Plinney, they called me about it, and I called Hillcom. And I asked if they, you know, about that service area there, why the Cape Jacob could get it, and then you go two miles and they can't get it, and they said that they didn't have, they couldn't bounce off the mountain.
All right, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, and this is, this is what, this is a possibility of what can happen. So you've got a tower. Wireless is basically a line of sight. You gotta be able to see that tower. Or you can bounce this signal off a home and then ricochet it over to that home.
That's what Hillcom gets a lot.
So you can do that, but it's still a line of sight, but it's basically mirrors, if you will. But once you get beyond that line of sight, wireless won't work, okay? Wireless that we're talking about that's pretty good. But what we can do is take from this tower, is run fiber, to these places that can't see the tower or see the home, and instead of running it from Clintwood to Osborne Gap, we're running it from, from a Cape Jacob to the home. See what I'm saying? So it's not, it's not the best solution where it's a straight home-run fiber solution, but you're getting people connected at much greater speeds than they ever thought, and it's meeting the requirements.
Well, I called them, and they didn't express any interest to me at all.
What I was gonna ask, now you mentioned the VTI grant. I know that Point Broadband's working that, they're working these CAP two grants and all that, but we're not hearing too much. The only thing that came back on CAP two for Dickinson was down in the Bartlick area. And I'm not, that's my area, I had no influence on that, I promise you. But I'm just struck funny because when you first opened up, Eric, you explained BBU and how this network was set up, the key thing during that time, no homes were allowed to get this, it had to be a business interest only.
Right.
Because it was bought with federal money. But strangely enough, there's at least one home I know of on Bartlick that had it all along. I don't know how that happened, it happened before my time.
Well, I, I will tell you that there are, there are several instances that businesses were operating out of the homes.
Yeah, he didn't indicate that when I talked to him.
They got connected.
Well, getting back to the point, Eric, what do we need to do? You said, hire somebody?
What I would suggest doing is, if you're serious about doing it.
Well, I'm serious, I know all of us, all of us are serious.
I was gonna say, let's go to the IDA, and you guys.
I, I think, I think there's collaborative effort between the board supervisors and the IDA.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, I will tell you, you're not gonna see one hundred percent of the county connected in the first year.
Well, I understand that.
You're gonna see the little Honey Camps connected, and you're gonna get those people excited, and then you're gonna say, okay, well, now we're gonna go over to, uh, to Tram, or we're gonna go to Skeet Rock, or wherever. And we're gonna work those. But we also have to work collaborative.
Well, I know this is covered up, so what, there's, I mean, you, you're not gonna get nobody to go out here and do this free.
Nope.
So, uh, would you suggest that, what would you suggest?
And I'm, again, I, I took my C and L hat off, I'm not, I'm not advocating, and I don't wanna advocate for that, because I'm a good citizen, I'm truly doing this.
What you, you suggest, we as a, a county board?
I think that's something that the county needs to discuss. I think that I would be glad to an IDA meeting to, 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 to see various opportunities, uh, to do some things like that. Again, I think partnering with an ISP upfront helps that process along, because that internet service provider can then help you determine the best areas to go after.
We established a good enough relationship, and I think we have that. I think one of the best things we did was selling DC Wind to Hillcom. But the, the thing is, we established a good enough partnership, it may not jump around the county as quickly as you like, because if, say, the first one's in your district, Rhonda, and even Hillcom might take it on, on their own, depending on the cost. Hey, I can grab another hundred right next door to that place by bouncing the signal. And I view the, probably too big of a number.
No, and, and, and remember, you know, most of these grant programs require a match. Some require a fifteen percent, some may require a twenty-five percent, some may require a fifty percent match. Again, that's where your partner comes in, because, you know, you don't, Dickinson County doesn't have the funds just to go, let's build an internet system, in that way. But you work it, so you work the, the leverage of, of the internet service provider, you leverage the funding program, and then you come together and the process is there.
We need, well, we need to check too, because we might be able to get money out of Cumberland Plateau, because this, they get paid revenues off this, and we're, we're, we stand for these, um, many there, that we're supposed to use these funds, to serve the unserved and underserved, because it's a no-brainer that Point Broadband's not gonna put a lot of, any of their money serving someone up in the highway, where they can make money.
I asked Point Broadband in an email, been about two, two and a half weeks ago, what was going on, what they were doing in Dickinson County. And I don't have the exact quote, but it was, we're not doing anything now, and we don't have anything on the plans for twenty twenty.
And that's what I wanna hit, because the last meeting that we physically attended, they're marching to go do work in Tazewell and Russell, and I'm feeling no love. I wanted to send some nothing to Cumberland Plateau, but these guys need to be working.
But, Mr. Phil, would it be prudent, or, uh, maybe something you could look at, but for us to send a letter from the board saying, you know, we'd like some sort of update from Point Broadband or Cumberland Plateau, as to what investments have been or are being made in, in regard to the broadband. To the contract, Mr. Price was referring to there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might, uh, delve out a little bit from a Rollers County attorney.
I'll say that.
I'll have to delve out a little bit from a Rollers County attorney, because I've worked many years on issues that Price is talking about. And in terms of, my recommendation to you would be to follow his recommendation, is to pass a, uh, a motion authorizing the IDA to put together, uh, a proposal for your review in terms of identifying areas, areas, uh, that are underserved or not served, identifying potential partnerships that you may have available to you, identifying money or additional funds or resources that could be available. And then work collaborative with the IDA to set priorities in terms of which areas do, which areas do you first proceed. I, I'll be quite candid, I think what Eric told us tonight, I don't think the letter's gonna do much good.
Well, I agree, I know.
No, but I, I.
I don't disagree, Eric.
Well, I'm just saying that we should send what, we should have questions that come from this board.
I think it's gonna be, the Cumberland Plateau boards will have to really set their foot down on that broad.
It would help us, because I've already raised my voice, I know, and we.
We have.
And we have, we have, because it's not just, it's not just what are they doing, that's one question, in this county, because if they're working in the other counties, they surely could have started a project getting ready for it in our county. But the other part that I wanna hit on is, are you living up to the contract? Because these guys are supposed to be meeting, and I don't think they have them.
One last, I have two last thoughts on that. That, that issue is that there's no singing the mountains, hungry pigs get fed. And you have to be, in a sense, using that old mountain quote, you're gonna have to set up the agenda, where you've got these projects ready, where you've got potential funding avenues, and go to.
I, well, I agree with that.
Nobody's gonna come to the rescue, like you.
Nobody is going to do it for. With Public Water, nobody was coming to our rescue. What we did was exactly what Eric, this is the model that we followed to get Public Water to ninety-five percent of the system. We had to undertake a process and procedures, and to create funding sources, we had to be at the trough, ready to go, in a sense. And when that happened, money flowed, projects flowed, and I'm happy to say, one of the, one of the great, uh, success stories is Public Water in southwest Virginia, because Dickinson County took the lead, and, and Dickinson County took the lead, Wise County followed, Buchanan, and Tazewell and Russell all followed behind us. And it's because we were ready, we had a plan, we had, uh, had available, and Ron Phillips was here somewhere, and Ron Phillips, he was part of this. But we can, we can complain all day about not getting money, we can complain all day about not getting service. But if you wanna help yourself, you gotta have a plan in place to push these people to provide funding for you. And when they see you're serious, and you're pushing, and you've got some resources available, uh, I think you're gonna have the same success of Water, Public Water.
What I would add to that, I'm, I'm not, I fully agree with what Eric, let's take action. We need to get moving on this. And that, and that's why I made the comment the last meeting about, the best plan is if we got people start lining up customers. But I also do think that we need to get Point Broadband going, because during that year of waiting for them to decide how much money they could still squeeze out of BBU when they were doing the sale, they were hosting town hall meetings in those two big counties, and nothing was happening over in this county. And we've gotta take action and get, like he's saying, and get ready like you're saying, bud, be at the trough. But at the same time, I still think we need to say something to Cumberland Plateau, and I will be, seriously, I.
Well, four of the seven are on that home. Open now.
You need two parallel paths, one is the one that Phillips laid out, we get proactive, take our own ball. Second one, though, is that we signed up to be part of this arrangement between Point Broadband and, and planning.
And the other point I wanna point out is that fiber isn't owned solely by Point Broadband, it's fifty percent blocks of the four counties.
I'm gonna say this, if this guy or idea, who is one of our representatives, has not been involved in a meeting in a year plus.
That's, that's scary.
That is not.
Yeah, and that's what I'm arguing about.
There are things going on.
And that's why I don't want you guys meeting separate from the other counties, you know, we keep tabs on what's going on.
And Ms. Moore and, and, and board, I, I will say that I have not been, um, silent on my request for having meetings.
No, he hasn't, and I haven't either.
I've, I've copied Mr. Peters on several emails, uh, asking, when, when are we gonna meet again? Are we gonna have another meeting? What's happening, you know?
And.
And it's, it's critical.
And, you know, what folks need to understand, when me, when we walked in in two thousand sixteen, when I came my first term, they were already knowing this was hitting them from BBU. And it was, I, what I'm seeing right now, we're setting ourselves up for the same thing, because we sit there coddling them all the time, instead of saying, hey, the contract says you should have already installed, when is it gonna happen?
Well, Eric, thank you very, very, very much.
I wanna point out one thing. Final question is.
I wanna say something.
My question is, where is the leverage on these folks? And, and that's the issue, where is the leverage? Who can bring leverage on them? The way you bring leverage on them is you get your projects, get them ready, you present them, and here's the leverage. Now, you may wanna do something in Tazewell, you may don't, what do they have ready to go? Part of Buchanan County ever go? Have, you gotta be ready with your projects before.
I fully agree, I fully agree. That's why I said something to the other board members at last meeting, that our best bet is if we start getting organized, we may need to host some town hall meetings and stuff to go along with that.
Can I, can I just, when we talk about a sense of urgency, remember I said we've got about thirty-four million dollars in the VTI? The deadline to notify DHCD of intent to application is July thirteenth.
So that's all.
And we're already, we're running late, Paul. Uh, Mr. Price, I see how I worked mine, and we worked it through Canyon Ridge and Brushy Ridge as a federal grant to Morgan River. Pearl and through Dr. Rafferty Highway out through there was another federal grant to Philip Peggy, was the, at the meeting that I went to. And you got to get your legislators to help you work with Hillcom, work with Scott County, now, and work with Point Broadband. But I think your best bet is Hillcom and Scott County to get broadband in Dickinson County. But you gotta work with your, uh, legislators, your congressmen.
What, what Ms., what Mr. Phillips said, and this was not rehearsed, is the exact thing that I'm doing in West Virginia. We've, we have, we have put together close to sixty-some projects, maps, cost estimates, estimated number of connections, and we have those. TDA, TDA, ready to go.
And when we talked earlier today, Eric, my whole point was, I didn't say it in exactly the right words, but we have to have some team, and that's what you're getting at, Mr. Phillips, we have to have a team working at our level in this county, be in it. And we need to enable them to do what they need to do to get this out.
Well, and you work in West Virginia, who's employing T and L to do this? Who's paying T and L?
Well, you've got a regional planning district, you've got counties, you've got EDAs. Uh, I've got, in West Virginia, you work with what's called a county commission, not board supervisor, but it's, um, county commissions, uh, EDAs slash IDAs. Uh, we're working with, uh, the equivalent of the Lenoisco and the Cumberland Plateau groups, and that, and that's who's paying us. And most of it is through, uh, funding that's been made available to pursue broadband planning.
Mr. Chairman, to start this, what I would recommend is a joint meeting between the IDA and board. And let the board lay out what they, what they would like for them to do, and how they would, would progress. And, uh, and, uh, have them put the plans together, as Eric has talked to us about. That's the only way that you wanna push, push, and push, to push these people into providing resources.
We have to show them we're ready.
You do. That's the trigger, that's the pressure.
The last thing I wanna do is leave this conversation and not take any action, so I hope that we will move forward with, with that. And I appreciate Eric's time very much, I know, like I said, he's worked, uh, got kids, but, uh, your, your knowledge is vast, so I know we'll be, you know, leaning on you quite a bit if, if we can push forward. This is the number one priority for me, uh, in my district, just to try to move this forward.
As a footnote, as a result of the planning that was done in Dickinson County, and Thompson Litten was part of that, this whole process, there was about, and Eric, you correct me, I believe a hundred and fifty million dollars of federal and state money came to Dickinson County as a result of work that was done. Does that sound about right?
On the, on the water, on the water side.
That's correct. About a hundred and fifty million.
Well, I, I will, I, I kinda shared this last time, and I got a little off-base, but we talked and bragged on Hillcom. We are supposed to be getting hotspot up where you're at, Ms. Robinson, up on the high school, where we were supposed, that was one of the locations. I don't know that that's, I don't think that's been installed yet. We're supposed to get one in Breaks Park, and, and the idea was to postpone that one at Breaks Park, that stuff being bought by Cumberland Plateau, because those were the two we were gonna. That stuff being bought by Cumbone Plateau, because those were the two we were gonna pay for. And we're gonna delay Breaks Park because of this virus, because we knew there was a more urgent need for the children to be able to pull in a parking lot somewhere and get access. Talked it around with Jim Baldwin, and I don't know, I think he called you too, Shelby. And we, um, we came up with Clintwood lumber, and three or four days went by, but Hillcom was there within one day, I think, and had it installed. So I wanna, special kudos, I've always felt that our best investment is if we can use local people, like Scott County and Hillcom.
I agree totally.
We have to help ourselves.
Yes, yeah.
That's not the way you're gonna get it, we have to help ourselves.
The one thing with Point Broadband, it does come through trammels, and there's a, there's a-
That's right.
A residence on the upper end of trammels that has it.
Yeah.
So with being on this committee and, and working on this trammel project, um, Mark Mormon is having a hard time getting emails to the people that's on those committees. So I've been getting the emails, been doing all of the print and taking all the paperwork back to them because of that. But I've been trying to call Point Broadband to see what it takes to hook up people because of this project. The number that's listed on the internet is not their phone number.
I remember you telling that last time, yeah.
And it's even on the television ads for Point Broadband, it's not their phone number. And I went online and filled, filled out as though I wanted service. So they called my house because it didn't pick up the house number. That was probably the second week in April, and they have never called back.
Hillcom's got an eight-three-five phone number, two-seven-six.
And I have brought up your, that area for a hotspot, um, and you'll have a voice in that, there'll be a full board meeting in June.
Mr. Chairman, if I might suggest that the board consider passing a motion to leave the IDA to develop a master plan for developing broadband anything-
I'm okay with that.
Will somebody make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we develop, have the IDA develop a master plan for broadband expansion.
Ask our county administrator to schedule a coordinated meeting between the two boards to develop a master plan.
Yeah.
So that's, is that your motion, do your second?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also.
When I was campaigning over, um, Sandlick Road, uh, towards Bee, Prime Canyon and all that, or right off of the Sandlick Road, there's a road, I believe there's a strip road that is Morning Glory Lane. And there's just two or three houses up there, one down here on the bottom, and they said, you are the first person that has ever been to my house campaigning. If you can get us internet, we are not registered to vote, but we will register to vote. I registered them, turned their paperwork back in.
It's right there on the highway.
Yeah, it's right there on the highway. And they done sent me a, uh, she works in Grundy, so she messages or emails me from work. And she's done messaged me in February after I come on in January, she's done messaged me in April on Facebook and email what's going on. They're about three miles from where it ended, coming down from Davenport Lake.
Strangely enough, there's a business right there, too, that never was able to get it.
Yeah.
From BBU.
Yeah.
Daryl Rasmick's business.
I just seen your email, that's, that's disgusting. No active projects in Dickerson County.
Where'd you get that?
Eric has sent that to us.
Well, send, oh, you did, okay. Well, telemedicine's a big thing, too, you know.
I did, it is.
Well, and I could talk, I mean, obviously, I'm passionate about this, but there are, you have to make sure that you match the program with the grant opportunities. Uh, Ms. Robinson's here, there are lots of opportunities, especially now-
Right.
For getting schoolchildren connected.
So now's the time to get the money.
And we got to grab that money, because somebody else is gonna get it.
Yeah, we gotta get somebody to get the money.
We gotta, we gotta be there.
I talked to-
All right, we got it.
Good enough.
Teacher yesterday.
Thank you.
I talked to a teacher yesterday that is going from their house to head back to the library to watch their videos or their, their things that they've gotta do through schools because of the access at their, at their house, and, and them schoolteachers.
Here we are with no internet, and I can tell you, in two thousand twenty, I was in a sandbox next to Saudi Arabia, and we had the fastest network on the ground in the air war, with IP-TV, IP phones, and everything.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks.
All right, we'll go on to item ten now, uh, this is the public comment portion of our se, uh, our meeting. I'll read this phone number again, if anyone's viewing the live stream and would like to call in their public comment, the phone number is two-seven-six-three-three-three-zero-three-five-seven. I'll read that once more, two-seven-six-three-three-three-zero-three-five-seven. I'll now open the floor up, bring one in person that would like to make a public comment.
Oh, may I comment upon that?
Yes, sir.
More or less, uh, thank you.
Jerry, state your name.
I'm sorry, my name is Jeremy, I'm the captain of the San Diego Rescue Club, it's over December eighth, two thousand nineteen. Have a great vision for the Rescue Club, would say helpful to the board supervisors in two thousand nineteen, and now, you guys are- You guys are kind of blessed with the Rescue Club, you guys can help us come forward and be able to provide the citizens in our area with the needs of emergency response. The last one that's provided us went for medical supplies that I don't think the Rescue Club has seen in nearly ten years. Isn't able to get out there and supply some flash support, thanks to your, to your approval. Uh, we're getting a lot of letters in from the community now that are thinking of, saying before that the response to San Diego Rescue Club gets in will take hours, in fact, not even a lot at all. Now we're arriving to their location, sometimes, whatever. Uh, just wanted to give you a little update of what we're doing, and there you guys have just left in the dark, I don't get the opportunity to come and ask, speak with you, obviously, because I do have full-time job elsewhere as well. Uh, so here, uh, the last few months, as we've seen in, in our area, the Rescue Club from other areas still popping. Uh, so I'll be speaking with K C Senator, I guess, one that started mapping, and then see if we can get our call area act that we once passed. But, so the, the call area we once had actually was shorted by the last, uh, captain that was in service of the Rescue Club, the road directions is not known to me. However, we got a Rescue Club on the mountain, and the door down is throughout daytime hours, uh, that can respond to a lot of these locations of the Rescue Club that we're planning to do. So again, we can get her in quick, it's not, however, I'm not gonna push that forward that fast, this case, uh, of course, we don't want him going to stop right now, but, uh, we've got some work that needs to be done, too, is starting to get us some of these tight narrow areas, starting to destroy what we have. And then we have another thing, of course, the AC issues, here in Good Old Virginia, I have, they go from cold one day to next day you're hurting it. So we want to be able to provide cooling air systems to our patients, not provide any bigger problems to them. Uh, also, which, you know, we are going to Wise County, and the Rescue Club, we're gonna be meeting in a meeting at one. Um, we're gonna introduce ourselves to the public first, I don't know, we got a lot of support from the, uh, the sheriff's office and others there as well. Uh, so we're gonna be asking them to provide us with, uh, prior funding to basically help us either a reterrization and modify it so we can have round block rooms, or build it with a breaking stage. We need, need to be able to provide services to the county twenty-four hours every day. Uh, I just wanted to kind of give a little insight of what we're through and what we're doing, uh, I guess, I just wanted to go first, say, yes, thank you, you guys have been wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to share a presentation, I wanted to be here soon, before this whole COVID thing's kind of slowed a lot of processes down, kind of tied up things, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, I was very excited.
Y'all doing a great job.
Anyone else, uh, physically present for public comment? Ms. Childress, you coming for public comment? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
As you all know, we have the reelection going on downstairs right now, so Kayla was up here talking to y'all about Carcon, and I was downstairs taking care of the office. In between phone calls, trying to listen to the live video. Um, I heard, so I had a phone call, so I heard the registrar's office changing, and Longport changing, saying that we took it upon ourselves to move Longport, and so then I get a call, so I didn't get to hear it all, so I've come up to see what she had to say, she wants to repeat it, so that maybe we can discuss it.
I said, we didn't vote on it, and I didn't know if we had to vote, he says he don't think we did.
Actually, we guys did adopt a new order on April the twenty-third of two thousand thirteen, it was defined by the chairman of the county, and the county administrator-
Okay.
Moving the Longport precinct into Green. We don't do anything.
Well, I didn't know y'all did, I couldn't remember us everybody though.
We have no authority over the whole place location, we can't be different, that is the word.
That, it makes sense, that's when the school went down.
I was gonna have to been looking at some of that time.
If you want to go by April the twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, if they don't move it. And far as-
Do all those things, they're fine, that's, that's good. I could, yeah, and I- I could pee, but I'm not going to.
As far as the Longport precinct and Ridge precinct is concerned, Longport closed period. We talked to Shelby face-to-face, and said, too close, we have to have a voting precinct. We talked to her face-to-face, and she made a suggestion, we moved it to Longport Prec, uh, Ridge precinct in-
That was the only place we had.
Add on the-
I cannot remember when I called that, yeah.
And many times you have said it immediately, and you have said, I didn't want to move it, it wasn't my ideal, it was your ideal.
Well, that was the only place we had, we didn't have another building.
It was the only place we had, because we said, is there any other place?
There was not.
There was not.
Mr. Chairman, yes.
But don't say we didn't make that decision, because we did.
I did call that, I did not remember.
As Parliamentarian, Mr. Chairman, we need to probably look at this in from a different, more different direction. The issue here, uh, from the registrar's opinion, based on the law that I've seen right now, and we've got a, actually got another verification from the state board of elections, I guess last week was, I think it's last week.
A week before last, yeah, somewhere in that.
We, we went to the state board of elections, and would you please give us another legal opinion for our attorney to look at, and see what's there? And because of the up-and-coming issue dealing with redistricting in two thousand and-
Well, it's actually, redistricting would have started this year, because of the census, and it would have been, we would have started by, you know, the end of this year, implementing the changes you guys were starting, we're gonna do this at the bottom of the map. However, because of COVID, the census hasn't been set back, so now what we have been told, instead of implementing the changes, like the first part of next year, it may be more towards the summer of next year that we're looking at. It's all gonna depend on when they finally allow the-
The issue is the law prohibits.
Right, and until that is done, and we can't worry about it.
You can't move anything.
And Longport came up last year, so I had asked last year, when we were talking about Carcon, because they said, you know, they said we're gonna move one, maybe we can move both, so this was all like this year. And they told me then, no, we could not, so this precinct pretty didn't just come about, it's been in the back since, even prior to acting, probably June last, last year. So that's why I reached out to the state board of elections when it came up this time, and said, hey, I just wanna make sure nothing has changed. I know before you told us we could not do that, and she gets in that amount of-
So the only chance to get that precinct back to Longport would be after the census and after the redistricting.
Yes, Ms. Willis wants it divided out.
Yeah, I did.
Now, if we're talking just relocating the entire Ridge precinct, like what we were addressing with Carcon, you know, she could move the whole Ridge precinct.
But she can't split it.
But that is everybody, right, we cannot-
I don't wanna do that.
She can't split it.
Right, we cannot split it, right. Which in redistricting would be the easy time to figure out.
That would be.
You know, where these voters are and everything.
And I think this-
You know, they can change it at that time, anyway.
I can understand Ms. Willis' thing, because the people at Longport does not like travel, so Ridge is dangerous, that's coming up.
We hear that a lot, you know, and that's why we try to-
Dangerous, and I understand the part of traveling about.
I think it's a bug, cause of that.
You know, member, and they'll do our voters, and it'll be the same thing at Carcon, it's the fact that early voting doesn't go in, go back. And with that, it is forty-five days of no excuse.
Vote whenever you want to, for whatever reason.
You know, yeah, you walk into our office, because unfortunately, it's something we've been addressing with data.
Just clarification, Ridge didn't exist as a precinct until we had the dilemma with the school.
No, it didn't.
No, it's just been there forever.
Okay, I want to make-
Ridge, Pearl, and what's that, that was the-
I just wanted to make sure.
But I, I think, Mr. Chairman, if the record can reflect, that Ms. Willis is on record officially requesting that this one time of the board consider, uh, splitting that precinct to move back to, uh, the-
Longport.
Longport, back to Longport community, I think she's on record.
Yeah, she was last week, or last month, too, but yeah, our version.
She's on record, and so I, that-
No one's already-
This is my legal opinion, that could be done at the appropriate time.
Yes, sir, yeah.
And I do call that, I don't remember voting, you know.
The parties that have been, how we did it all.
Thank you, lady.
Wasn't the call so far, we didn't change it.
Thank you all.
And I do a plug down, so.
Thank you. Uh, one more time, I'm gonna read the phone number, two-seven-six-three-three-three-zero-three-five-seven. If anybody wants to call him a public comment, if not, we're gonna wrap that.
Mr. Chairman. I have an email that asked me to read hers, and I asked him, he said, I can't.
Yeah, let's find me.
Uh, I got this email this afternoon from Phyllis Mullins, and she asked, she has a death in her family, it's her brother that's deceased. And she asked that I read this to you tonight, and I told her that I wouldn't. Says, first of all, I would like to say that the loss of my brother is preventing me from being in attendance tonight. It is not that I would have been here to, I would have been here personally to address the board. There seems to be some misunderstanding as to how funding of our school system and children is appropriated. I would like to take a moment to give the board and others in attendance a short summary of how funding monies are used in reference to all school employees. A significant portion of funds go to pay our employee benefits, specifically health insurance premiums, according to the fiscal year nineteen status. Dickerson County School is first in the region in salaries and benefits for teachers with a BA and zero years. Dickerson County is the first in the region in salaries and benefits for teachers with a BA and five years. Dickerson County is third in the region in salaries and benefits for teachers with a BA and ten years. Dickerson County Schools is fourth in our region in salaries and benefits for teachers with BA and fifteen years of service. Dickerson County is sixth in the region in salaries and benefits for teachers with BA and twenty years. Dickerson County is sixth in salaries and benefits for teachers with a BA and twenty-five years. Dickerson County School ranks tenth in the region in salaries and benefits for teachers with a BA and thirty years. I do not feel that we need to remind you of the drastic cut the school board budget is coming from the state, compounded with the even more drastic cuts coming from the board of supervisors. The school system is facing a dire situation with possibly cuts in employment and in programs which we have an extremely negative impact to the education of our county's greatest assets, the children. After being in contact with their delegate Longport, I feel there is hope on the horizon for our county. I implore you to please find the requested money to fund our schools so that we can continue to keep our children only at the top of the ranking in SOL schools, but also above the rank of the most economical advantageous, advantageous county in our state. Thank you very much, Phyllis Mullins, President of Dickerson County Educational Association.
I have a tense question, Ms. Shannon. When she's talking about regions, what's she talking about seventeen counties, or what's she talking about?
I would say Southwest Virginia.
The heart of San Francisco, many counties.
You know, Mr. Halligan?
You know?
I, I mean, I've got the numbers, the average salary from the Department of Education right here, and the fourth dead last, and all the coastal counties, but I'm not really sure what she's-
I'm hard to shoot.
I don't have any idea what she's talking about.
It's rent benefits, I think it's a difference.
All right, I'm gonna read the number one more time, Mr. Parliamentarian, two-seven-six-three-three-three-zero-three-five-seven. Give it another moment, or you could, yes, ma'am, go ahead, okay. Yes, absolutely.
I hope I read that correctly, Phil. I couldn't prevent my children.
I'm in the middle of all the way, I can get to that, so I'm still just, and for that, we are looking for ways to damage that, but I just, can I just, I want to bring the board's, uh, support, uh, to remain well, uh- Oh, please.
But I want to come up sort of like you.
Okay, thank you, definitely, my pleasure. Um, and I want to, to, uh, share with you, uh, a memo that I'm sure you have received, it's the main plant, uh, memo from, uh- It's the Mayflower, uh, memo from, uh, Aubrey L. Lane, sixth grade finance. Uh, and interestingly enough, uh, along with the various, uh, corporations in the school division has received, Dickson County has also received one point two million dollars in the parents' act, which is wonderful. Uh, it's a little bit different than, uh, the school division because the school division has to reimburse and then it pays back. And then the county, um, it's just drawn down. So I think there's a form that needs to be signed and then funded and will be, um, transferred back to the town, to that. So that's one point two million dollars. And one of the things that, um, again, it's restricted, but we're looking at all ways that perhaps, uh, we, uh, the school board and the county could work together. One of the things that, uh, we hear that what the county allows is, excuse me just a moment, yeah, to read this. Uh, this is on page ten, expenses to facilitate distance learning including technological improvements and connections with school closings and natural compliance with COVID nineteen policies. I mentioned this because Mr. Prossus was talking about, uh, you know, all the technological improvements that, you know, the county may be able to, the whole district may be able to use with this one stuff prepared. It also says that, um, there is a opportunity, um, again, I apologize for this, but, yes, um, that the cost of replacing, uh, the cost of diverting educational support staff and faculty to develop online learning opportunities. Our board is, um, and our committee of teachers and administrators and directors are thinking that, you know, it's kind of kind of looking at what next year may look like. The next school calendar next year is going to look very different, very, very different. And we are starting, um, to think of free areas. One is that we're gonna start working. Uh, one is gonna be traditional and then the other one will be timed at opening the school two days, it'll be off free, you know, that kind of schedule looking at self-conditions. Our staff is working, uh, is very busy and this time you mentioned it, reach on to a full professional development of our staff, uh, to begin to use Google Classroom and apps, all of those kinds of things to teach our children, especially those that do not have internet, uh, there. And so this COVID relief fund does, uh, cover the cost of educational support, uh, developed online learning that's paid willingly. So we are in the process of that. Um, it's, it's a sensitive process for us that we have to look at that. So I just asked the board to look at two things. Number one, if you're looking for funds, uh, possibly, uh, to add to, uh, the school budget to help, uh, with, uh, online professional development that our staff is under going to get ready for the next school year. Uh, the county has been alive, one point two million dollars to do that. Also, the, um, what Mr. Pross was talking about, um, you know, very, very strong when you're planning, it does allow for any kind of online technological activity.
It does.
Uh, so we would appreciate any help, uh, with the budget. We would appreciate any, um, additions. And we hope that you will consider, um, this hurdle again explained because the money is, um, drawn down. Uh, in other words, you don't, the county does not need to spend the money before you're reimbursed. The money comes down, it's, uh, thankful and sad to be, uh, to have to, uh, feel. At the school division, we have to spend the money, okay? And then we'll reimburse the bank. So I, I just ask the board some consideration, and I think I'm over the period.
Well, I, I had a question.
Oh, I forgot to set the timer.
As far as I'm concerned.
Ms. Robinson, you're gonna look at that.
You're not on timer yet.
Okay.
If you're okay with the question, then I'm okay with him asking.
Answer it.
Now, all, no, all I was gonna make a comment, we are, we do want to partner with you and make sure that we identify those things. But yes, we're gonna need to know what those costs are because the money is there and we don't want to give it back.
Um, I think that Mrs. Howser's daughter is probably, uh, all raising, uh, trainings like that. But we have had full professional development along with, um, and I'm, you mentioned several things in the elevator that you received, those things that we've been doing from March the thirteenth, and this was one of them. We are in full professional development to go virtually, on a virtual environment next year. Um, you know, we don't know when we're gonna be in school. We're gonna have a calendar, um, multiple times.
Well, Parliamentarian is not keeping time.
Okay, um, I take that. We're gonna start, we're gonna adopt a calendar next, um, next month or next week. But we may not be back in school until October or November. You know, that's, we just don't know. We may only have, you know, ten students for each time.
Here's your.
Mind modeling the things that we're having to say in the logistics of that. So again, all of that expense, I'm just looking for ways to help the board supervisors look at some possible funding. We can certainly get you that, Mr. Evans.
We're, yeah, we're gonna need that from all the agencies and that, and we, yeah, it's gonna have to be a partnership.
But we had a full professional development probably since the first of May, um, and we have been continuing the fifteenth to help our staff, uh, be trained and then to manage our parents and then our children. So it's a free phase of issues.
My understanding, you should have possibly seven hundred thousand in carry funding as well.
Correct.
And the majority of that's gonna go towards devices.
Yes, we are purchasing, uh, devices for every single child.
Do you know exactly how much that's gonna be this year?
It's at approximately.
Four hundred, that's what I thought.
Yeah, four hundred thousand dollars.
So those are gonna be like iPads or light.
Uh, they're gonna be Chromebooks, sir.
Chromebook.
And then also for students that do not have, um, internet and phone and are on the line of conversation here by classroom. So teachers can put that in classroom and take that. Uh, along with that, as I mentioned earlier, we're also planning on, uh, staff development for teachers. That's what we're doing right now and then, yeah.
To use the technology.
To use the technology because, you know, it's a, you know.
A lot of grandparents, right?
Ms. Robinson, one other thing.
And they don't know, they do not know.
One other thing is what we were talking with Erica about. We need to be looking at places where these folks can, you can park that stuff online and where they can pick it up, like the libraries and if there's other places needed.
We can deep drive the.
Yeah, we have hot, uh, access points in each of our schools.
That's one, and then we can do others in communities through.
And, uh, so, but we have, we do have some of, you know, like this. But the other problem with that is educating our teenagers and our brain, that's how they use, uh, technology.
Yeah, something be, that is, Mr. Chairman.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's. So again, I'm just saying, all the way consideration, um, the, this is wonderful and I'm, I'm very proud that the county has the city business and hopefully they can reuse the infrastructure, um, but also if there's any way that we can.
There are many restrictions around that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Not, not for me, ma'am. Ms. Robinson, anybody else? Thank you.
I noticed, I don't, shit, man, there's a lot of restrictions. I'm.
You're on the timer, too. Go ahead, Mr. Kennedy. Yes, sir, your floor is yours, uh. Sure, okay. Just pick, uh, get some over in the microphone.
Who's he? Oh, I don't know. Are you? No, I just mean, I just mean. I, I can't thank you. I'd say that. Oh, I'm saying.
Uh, I just want y'all to look at the picture there that I gave the bus. It's a, it's worried by a tree in October and unfortunately no one was hurt. Uh, Mr. Moon, Mr. Robinson, all concerns and safety, please, and board. Nothing ever meant about damaging the bus, just a chance to transport a care attitude and a city citizen or student. The concern was not the financial loss of the bus, but the welfare of the student. During this budget crisis, what is your concern? Are you concerned for our students and the moral of the term about the financial aspect? Are you concerned about the possible loss of jobs and hardships that teachers and personnel will face due to, they, they save tax and funds? Or are you only concerned with making statements that you don't care about the consequence, drastic test, or nail in students and personnel? What do you want your legacy to be? Do you want it to, want to be remembered and born supervised with the growth of the back, the victim damage, the safety. If this budget remained the same, that would be one reason to remember. And teachers and personnel are gonna be doing a great job. And students are performing great in SOLs. And Dickson County's school system's reported scores much higher than the Georgia counties' general. You know, making one of the largest tests, the maximum memory of forty-six years of being in the system. And at the time, this is what probably you're noticing, is at the time, you know, our personnel not paying for the meetings. It's easier to keep the budget and you don't have to deal with teachers first of the day. And you see feedback there, noted kept the jobs, it's a lot easier, students will not run. I don't think you'd be, you'd make a drastic test, all our personnel would be given thanks. You're taking advantage of the COVID nineteen I say. Will your budget reward the hard work and success of our personnel? Will your budget allow the system to keep the personnel needed to provide our students with a well-rounded education? This budget, and you know, I hope you will reconsider it and even pass it after, for our system to fund needs. So it's always unexpected expenses such as placing the bus at toll and off toll by the tree. This is an older bus, but it will have to be a place of new bus that insurance will not die for. The budget is like a rubber band. The further it stretches, the weaker it becomes and will eventually break. Is this the board that we call this party? If funding is not restored, then it's yes. Do you want to be perceived as a politician that just goes along with the plan? Or do you want to be perceived as an individual that supports, supports our students, your children, and your grandchildren? The, uh, local match funding, sometimes I know that's well out. A bit more than it was, uh, required, but the day it was required, it, it just supported our system altogether. And we need more money, we need to keep this up today, we need to keep our place, everything in place. And, uh, of course, you may say you support us, and I know you do, but y'all show finance, you can't just be where we're, you have to have support. This budget is not one that needs to be in any, I just thank you for your time. Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
I have a answer for some of that. I resent that comment that says we're hiding. Nobody has asked for this coronavirus to keep anybody out of here. I've answered dozens of emails to you and our teachers. My office is on Main Street. I've met personally with staff and teachers. I've answered every call and every email. There's not one person, especially me, on this board that is hiding from anyone in the school system that wants to discuss my reasoning or any reasoning in regard to this budget. I have talked to Ms. Robinson daily regarding this budget. I've talked to my constituents daily. So I resent that very much. I'm speaking to say that we're hiding behind the coronavirus. I, I talked to dozens of people. I had the correspondences to back them up. So that was an improper statement to say that.
That say hiding. Gentlemen, 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 wait. No, there's, there's no debate committed.
Well, I want to clear, but Mr. Phillips, I understand that. I want to clear the record. We, we, we didn't ask, our budget has been impacted by the corona. We didn't ask for the coronavirus. We're not using the coronavirus to, to do anything. So that was, that's not accurate.
Gentlemen, here, if I stop one person at a time, you can't, in, in this session, we're public comment, there's no debate committed. You, you have a right to speak and speak your mind, and the chairman has a right to speak in and readdress it. And so that's basically the way the parliamentary system works.
And I'll say that I've got constituents who are business owners that I've talked to every day that are mandatorily put out of work, don't get a paycheck, don't get health insurance. And, and to say that, that we're hiding behind the coronavirus or insinuate that, that's, well, I, that's my fault. That's why I've, and I don't appreciate the trouble things. The floor is still open in public comment. I'll read the phone number again. Two seven six three 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 zero three five seven is the number for public comment, and we have another person in the, it wants to speak.
Hey, I don't know if I need a microphone, but shut up. I called the one of you today, Peggy. I apologize. I didn't get a chance to call you. Some of the things that I've seen and heard, I was on the school board about forty years ago, in nineteen seventy-nine through nineteen eighty-two. We went through some bad budget times too. There are some things that aren't funded by the state. Many things are not funded. That has to be funded locally, or those are assistant principals at certain levels of school. I'm not sure that we qualify as being the state. Because nurses aren't funded by the state. They're funded by local counties. You want your school nurse, your school to operate without school nurses. You'll have a bunch of parents, a bunch of teachers, uh, bury up there if that happens. I can tell you where you get it. Sports is funded. None of the money for the sports is funded by the state. That's funded locally. Uh, none of that, your curriculum, I get it. It's funded for money you get from the state. You want to cut that out, make the budget. Those are a lot of the issues that you have to deal with, might be first names. We have some of the, and I've, I've had schools throughout these counties, and I see some of the best maintained buildings that we have, that we have the best maintained buildings around, and they're older than some of the other ones I'm in. So you gotta realize that. You're watching, well, my wife taught for forty-four years, started teaching with Mr. Kennedy then, in his county. The teachers many times gave up races, gave up money for benefits. So if those benefits get raised, you're taking money away from them because they have the money here, but I think you had it. The information that this, uh, shell read that, you know, you're another one with benefits here. When you go to, uh, uh, join a county, take last county. They may pay more, but look what you pay region now, or it's much better than this situation. Crime and codes are some of the things you need to consider, and you need to consider what it means to these people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else present? That means phone calls, please, first. Is everybody okay with being in the public comment portion?
I'm gonna, I make a motion. I make a motion, we end the public comment. Third second.
Second.
All the people favoring, please, if I was saying, I, I also, we want to hide them eleven roads. I'll start, I guess, with this Kaiser Ervington District anymore, but, and I guess I'll read that number again for this piece, maybe. The phone number. If anyone has any road concerns, they can call two seven six three 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 zero three five seven. Road concerns for the Ervington District.
I don't think that I have anything. I have been on the phone this week and last week with, uh, uh, Herman Kilgore from Wise, and I have been on the phone with, uh, the call center in, uh, Salem. And they have made some notations of some, uh, ditch line drainage problems. And the lady, I believe her name was Jennifer, that answered in Salem said that they are very, very aware of the ditch line issues that needs to be addressed if they can just get some of that taken care of, so.
Uh, Sandwick District.
I, I don't see anyone, but I'll say it in case the sheriff's department have any. But, um, is anyone from Sandwick District got any road issues? I got a call on one today and I got a call, and that's Scotty, you're in my district, so I apologize. I didn't forget that, but I just met. I was gonna look at you guys who travel the roads too. Um, but I, uh, yeah, good one. But anyways, I did get a call on Willard Stanley, and that's something the truck shop, you know, will take care of. It's already been called in. I just need to see if they've been able to get to it.
Ms. Wilson, you have a district.
I don't have anyone, I don't think, from Kennedy, except being, and you have any concern? I know I got one from their next to Grace and Chapel. Did you notice that? Sorry, that Melharts. I'm calling it in tomorrow. But I, I call in daily road issues.
Yes, that Quigwood District, Miss Flot.
I don't, I know you're mentioning about the lights, huh?
They've really not started rolling.
Yeah, I noticed that. I tried to see where you were.
They've just now started rolling it, but they will get bad. I just kind of.
Well, I'd like you to show me, sometime I'll come over and I want you to go with me and show me exactly. I, I.
Uh, they were mowing it that week today.
They've been mowing over in Osmond Gap too. I was over there yesterday and. I saw an Osmond Gap where, right after you passed Freddie Moans' house, the, the road fell over, very dangerous. Uh, I thought to call, uh, and make a, Salem, and then to Herman. I've called him, I, I'll thank Shelby for helping me, because I, I think you do have to call Salem, and then maybe call Herman, but you get more, you get more, uh, you get more personal, you get more bang for your call, so, uh, I do have a problem over here at, uh, uh, Fox Town Road, where you go up to Lower Twin, every time you have a heavy rain, it washes out, uh, and I, uh, needs, drain pipe needs to be replaced, I don't know, I'm gonna have to ask, uh, someone to call me today, and the town says they would, uh, do the work if, uh, the state would pay for the drainage, but the, the drainage is going to cost about four thousand dollars, so I don't know how we're going to fix that, but we'll work on it the best we can. Another place, which I'd like to ask Mr. Fleming, a question about, uh, it's in, it's actually in ten, it's the district, where Raven Glacier lives, where that tower is, it's on the ridge, you don't watch, and he said that Comcast goes up through there, Verizon goes up through there, and the police officers go up through there, wh- why is that?
My kid lives up there.
Well, I know he lives there, but he says there's just a lot of county police going up and down through that road there. You know why? Is that there, have something to do with that tower?
I don't know.
You don't know nothing about, okay. Well, I think it's Comcast and Verizon, maybe. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Anyone from the Will's district? And I'll read the phone number one last time for any district concern, any county road concerns, two seven six, three three three, zero three five seven. Hearing no calls, Miss Clerk? We'll move on then, uh, to number twelve, the Corps of Engineers Sheriff's Department contract, and I believe the founder, David, this is where they provide security for the county.
Uh, yeah, this is, this is, uh, a contract between the Corps of Engineers and the county, and the first was executed back in seventeen. Uh, with, with several option years afterward, what you are being asked to, to approve tonight is the next amendment in that, the Corps contacted us and said it was their desire to go ahead and op, exercise the option for period three. Uh, basically, period three just provides a small bump in increase for the wages that they'll provide to our, to our patrol guys, uh, Mr., uh, Sheriff Fleming and Mr. Owens, uh, met with Karen and I today, and we talked about, you know, there'll be a, a small bump in, in, in pay increase for our, our patrol guys on this, but we would ask that you approve this amendment, uh, so that we can send it back to the Corps, and we'll, we've already, we've actually already started the process with the Rock. So, we're just, uh, another season of patrol work.
Any discussion on this contract from anybody? Mr. Phillips?
Uh, there's two ways, gentlemen, we're here that it's the substance of the matter, and, and the county administrator talks about the substance, and the legal format, it's fine.
Mr. Phillips, anything you want, okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the contract, here's a second.
Second.
All those in favor of we approve the contract, contract to the Corps of Engineers, please sign the public thing, aye?
Aye.
Aye, also, so then we'll move on to, uh, item thirteen. David?
You, uh, items thirteen A and thirteen B are kind of a continuation, I think last month we had done.
We talked about that last month.
We had done a mutual aid cooperation agreement between our sheriff's office and Russell County. So we've now also gotten with our other neighboring counties of Cannon and Wise. You have two documents in front of you, I think Mr. Phillips was interested in getting these, uh, put together with those, those counties, and I think Sheriff Fleming has also had the opportunity to, to review, so we present these tonight for your approval.
I make a motion that we approve this, uh, mutual aid and cooperation agreement between the Cannon and Wise.
I accept.
In Dixon?
I'm a motion, the second, all those in favor of approving the cooperation agreement between the Cannon and Wise County and the Dixon County Sheriff's Office, please sign the public thing, aye?
Aye.
Aye, as well. Item fourteen. And I know we discussed this, I believe, been two meetings ago, David, is that right, or we haven't made a connection?
We did, this is in regard to, uh, C X S's plans to abandon a section of rail in Dixon County. Um, Mr. Phillips, you may have to help me a little with what we have in front of us tonight. I know that we, uh, we had to notify C F that by, by letter that we have an intent that, uh, we would like to be engaged in some way in process of planning for whatever the next phase of this rail abandonment will be. Uh, I, I think that our, our current intent is that for Dixon County to work with its I D A in order to be able to do, to work on some type of either economic development and/or recreational prog, uh, project with this, but I know that, uh, Mr. Phillips has been working with, uh, Mr. Mullins of the I D A, so he can probably fill in more of the gaps than I can.
Mr. Chairman, at, at your request, and also other board requests, that you asked that I review this and research it. And it's been a very interesting research process, it's a very interesting prospect. There are some great opportunities, uh, I believe, to create a rail to trail about almost fourteen miles of abandoned rail. To start this process, there is a federal agency that requires a petition be filed with them to, uh, stop the abandonment. To halt it, to, to make sure the county and the I D A have the opportunity to develop a rail to trail plan. And this petition, what it does is goes in front of the appropriate federal authorities, uh, with a motion, uh, to halt uh, the abandonment process, to give Dixon County and I D A up to one year an opportunity to negotiate for the, uh, prospect of obtaining the rail to trail. The only reason I gave out the petition tonight, this is an amended form with only one amendment to it, you got this in your package, it requests that the board waive any filing fees. And so there will be no filing fees required by the local county government. And once they receive this, then it permits the county and the I D A to develop a master plan, then begin negotiations with, uh, the, uh, the railroad for that, uh, the prospect of building a rail to trail. There are some federal and state funds out there available, potentially grant money, to help you all to assist this. And those areas where they have actually developed these, they've been highly, highly visible and highly sought after recreational opportunities along this rail to trail opportunity. If you didn't file the petition, you don't, you don't get a placeholder. So all this petition does is a placeholder for everything you're on halt for an abandonment, allow you time to put together a master plan to negotiate with the railroad, and then report back to the, the appropriate federal authorities as to what the agreement might be. Can I ask any questions that you might have?
I'll send it, we need to have that master plan.
Uh, as soon as possible. Times are running, so you, uh, once we put this in, there'll be a year to, to do it, so the I D A, in my opinion, there should be two motions, one is to, to, you've already done, you've actually authorized the county administrator to sign the petition. I want that in front of me, but there's a second motion that needs to be made is to refer this to the I D A to have them develop a master plan.
So here a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we go forward with this.
I'll second that.
And to, to refer the, the rail to rail, uh, uh, plan two, uh, to, uh, to the I D A.
Refer, yeah, to refer it to the I D A.
All those in favor of proceeding with this motion to refer the master plan, or to refer the petition to give the master plan to the industrial development, I believe that's in there, aye? All those in favor of that motion, the second, please sign the public thing, aye?
Aye.
Aye, as well, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Thank you.
So is that another one that needs to have another joint meeting, meeting for?
At this time, no.
Oh, okay.
All right, we'll move on to item fifteen, has everyone had time to review the, uh, road maintenance policy? I guess the Board of Public Welfare, did they adopt this, David, I guess?
They have, and my, my was told, yes, they have, this, this is, you know, we, we, the county has been providing emergency funds for several, for the last several years, trying to respond to a lot of these, uh, washouts and, and other things that happen as part of weather events, but it's, it's become such a, an overwhelming problem that there is far greater need than there, than there are funds, and, and so even, even with the restrictions that the county has, that's one reason we could look to D S S for assistance. However, D S S has decided they have to have their own in, internal, uh, criteria, and they've laid that out in front of you. Uh, I'm sure Mr. Phillips has had an opportunity to look at this, but yes, this was drafted and passed by.
Uh, Mr. Moore, I talked to Susan after our last meeting.
Uh-huh.
She said that they presented this to their board, as if they wanted to make any changes in it.
Right.
They did not, and so they sent it to us to see if we want to make any changes before they adopted it. She said we really didn't have to adopt it, she just wanted to know if we had to have any changes, and they are actually going to vote on it. Uh, their next meeting, I think.
Right, this is more for our input, our input.
She said if we're wanting to change anything, we need to do it tonight.
The only thing I see is, um, criteria, because it references a couple exhibits, I don't know. I, I'm one, because I've asked about it, and I'm good with it, I just, um, we've got to, this is, what we're looking at here, we typically probably only going to be able to help like with a load of gravel and stuff.
I mean, yeah, five hundred bucks.
Five hundred dollars for each?
Each request.
Well, is, does this mean it's going to be divided between the five districts equally?
That's correct, please.
She does, she is a dad.
Well, we, I want to make sure it's divided equally.
Well, now.
It's not always equal.
I will say this, we have certain districts that take a lot worse hits. You know, there, one time when we did this, it really wa, it really was only from Clinchco on over to Hayside, it only takes. One time Shelby's district was just leveled, and the rest of the county really didn't. They, they will be aware of the, the, the district aspect, because we're trying to help everybody in the county, not just certain areas. However, certain areas are more prone to these.
But it's kind of like, it's kind of like.
I agree with you, and I agree with you.
Well, sometimes you need more than five hundred dollars.
Well, but that's one of the reasons for that dollar limitation, is so that funds don't get expired on one or two events.
The only thing I get locked in it was that you could only come back in, is it seven years, um?
Five years.
Five years, such as Keith Hall, it floods every time it comes to rain over seventy-five. But every five years is a long time for someone to have to wait.
Yes. I've often got you, how much more do I give them, a thousand more dollars in a gravel fund? I don't know, I really had the fit spot today, if you're having a more gravel than you.
Here, here's the thing, you know, first off, social services isn't in the business of picking and choosing.
No.
Someone comes in with a need, they give it to them. We're going to have to add money to their accounts if it's depleted, but the idea of having a window that you, you can't come back again is to limit that, because they're dealing with, and I can tell you, I've seen it. Some of these people, with every rainstorm, they've got to have it again, and I, and I don't know what to do to fix that, because what we're really doing is putting Band-Aids on something that's going to happen.
I would like to move that to three years instead of five myself, I don't know, they said that their board didn't make any changes.
What, this is not set in stone. And so what I'd recommend is adopt it as is, and as it develops, my best guess, it's the first time it's ever been tried.
It is.
Yeah, I, I think we need to adopt anything, I guess, we just sort of need to, it's a fluid document.
I mean, it's, 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 that it's okay as is, and then over the next year or six months, see how it works and operates, and have a report back, and then make changes, and so.
And I'll tell you, I really don't have a trial to go on three years, it's just, we just need to be aware that we have to fund it again, so either way.
It can be re, it can re, be reshuffled, readjusted, and so it's, so it's not set in stone, it's not, it's fluid, and it can change to meet the demands that, that, that what you see. But the real issue here is how much money are you willing to put in?
Yeah.
Yeah, we put ten thousand on it, twenty, twenty.
And so the question is going to be, if you want to go to a thou, thousand, you're going to have to put another twenty thousand in it, you see what I'm saying, I mean, it's.
Well, I, I want to see how it works.
Yeah, I'd say, my reckon, see how it works, see how it operates, and then see how you wish to.
I think the five hundred is like the gesture to help them and assist, and I think that's good, I think the main thing maybe what Shelby was getting at is if we have to.
One of the things that we're battling legally is, is, in the beginning, is really the time for the, not just for to legally do it. We found a statute that allows us to do it, so it's a, it's a legal process.
The thing on it is, she has more leeway than we do, because she can work with disabled people, and she can work with people that got children that need to get out, because that's that.
You can't do what.
Don't, don't have three.
Exhibit I've talked about defines the criteria, there is a criteria qualified for, and that's the best.
She has a little bit more leeway than we do.
So you, in serious, and not serious, legally, you, you couldn't do what she's doing, but there's a stat. There's a statute that allows her, since she is Department of Social Services, to initiate a grant process. And you have to keep her out of the, out of building roads, she can't build roads.
Right.
But she can, she can, uh, have a grant process, and that's how our department is set up, so that's the grant process.
I like it, hope it works.
So we'll move on then, I guess.
So we're just going to?
No changes needed.
No changes, and then they are the ones to approve.
And I guess, probably move on. Any discussions to be, get, get our board, or Miss Mullins, her board, and say, what about this or that, and then we'll come back in a few minutes. Uh, moving on to number sixteen, on the agenda, annual plan for roads and bridges.
Yeah, our coal road committee, we had met, I believe, I want to say.
They take one for one.
Yeah, her first name. Um, as part of that, there comes forth this resolution that basically establishes the budget for the year, uh, and lays out how those funds are, are spread and, and giffied up. We typically would have had that passed at bay, but the, the guy got a little messed up in his paperwork, and he copied over the wrong document and sent us a resolution. He, he thought he sent us this resolution and actually sent us a letter. So he was able to get the resolution put together, we had, we just need approval on this, and then we submit that back to the DOT, and that's what goes to the state that just establishes the broad parameters of, of our funding for FY twenty-one.
And David, I know we've discussed this, and, uh, I see Mr. Phillips not hearing more, but we have the ability to reduce the amount that goes for water projects.
We do.
And that's something as a coal, I'd like to get to this more, I don't know if we would do that here, uh.
Right, it would have been, it was actually going to be something I wanted to take up, do in a budget workshop, of course, we've been wiped out this past year, but I think we'll probably, if we can ever get back to some normal, we probably should have some board workshops. I think, I think the best time to address that, because we had said the next time the coal road committee met with its new member, we would like the full board to participate in that.
Yes.
And I think that's an excellent time to bring that up, because right now, what, what, what Mr. Evans is referring to is on, uh, water projects, the county is funding the maximum amount that they are allowed, that they're allowed by, by law to take severance money to put toward water projects, toward water sewer projects. Uh, used to be that the county was only funding the P S A, a, a year or two ago, we modified that to where a certain percent now also goes to assist the town of Clintwood.
That's what I was going to ask, because I didn't see that list.
Well, it doesn't have to be separated, it basically, it just goes to, to, to the, to the water authorities, and there's only two hits that the town, they both receive, but.
I know we did that, and I'm not.
But as we sort of move forward, and we've come to the point where we have a lot of water coverage, and then now, you know, we're, we're, they are doing some sewer projects, and we're doing rehab, maybe it would be, especially given that we don't have revenue sharing anymore, we know we're going to have to have greater county funding to put into our own road systems. It may be a time to start talking about some pullback from how much we're applying percentage-wise to the water sewer project, and maybe put that money over into road funding.
That, that, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, I, the only thing I would say is I would like Ron Phillips and never come in.
Well, listen, listen again, we're, we're, this is not tonight, this.
Yeah, I agree, and, and I just went ahead and did that.
And at that meeting, I think it's great to have both the town and the P S A both there, but.
I agree, I agree.
Focuses of the night.
The only reason I wanted to mention it is because we are in the business of maintaining rural water lines, and we've got to be cognizant. One day that severance is not going to be there.
I'm also going to bring our former engineer, Fleming, because he has a lot of insight into this.
Yeah, he does, he does.
And I think that it's part of a bigger discussion that we need to have, because this is a finite sum of money, and as you can see, this is smaller than what we normally have.
And it's the only road fund that does our road work.
Well, this is also where your severance lies, and, and, and this shrink. And, and, and this shrinks almost annually and we're going to come upon a point where.
I'm going to suggest something else similar. We give, we do, we cut, I mean, on the DSS, we just talked about putting some restrictions on that. Similar to that, we do cemeteries in these, what really are private roads and we may doing gravel may get to be a problem.
Yeah, I know.
Because um, some of these cemeteries, I mean, there are certain ones that are surveyed out that are public cemetery. But we're really typically just, a lot of them aren't really that. They're, as long as they don't have a lock on the gate, they get gravel. As long as they're standing grain. Those are things we're going to have to look at in this conversation.
They have to sign something saying that they would allow anyone to bury them in that cemetery.
I don't think they look for that. They just, it's just if it's not locked up, it's considered public. But we do have some that are surveyed out that are actually public cemeteries.
And have.
In the future, they'll be covered from.
Any questions or any more discussion on the resolution from the uh, Colton Road, excuse me, Colton Gas Road Advisory Committee? If there's no other discussions, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I made the motion that we accept the plan.
Here, second.
How second?
All those in favor of approving Daniel's plans for roads and bridges, including five percent of the I? Uh, also, out in seventeen, I guess, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Moore.
Well, this would be on the heels of the public hearing.
Right.
The reason for the public hearing is in order to, to make the change for voting precinct for car pond. The ordinance has to be changed. Uh, listed here on, on page sixteen would be the important part. Uh, page sixteen is where the change for the car pond precinct would now list the truck shop as the address. But if I heard you all correctly, you may still want more information before you want to consider voting for the change? As you had asked for an update of, of cost that it would, to, to re kind of redo the car pond precinct that.
I guess I'd just feel like to do, I, I mean, if you had a gun to my head and I had to vote, I would vote to move it to the truck shop tonight. But I think if, if it's not too much on Mr. Rakes and Mr. Sawyer to give at least a general estimate on what it would cost to make a bathroom and ensure all the ADA compliance of that facility. I wouldn't mind to see that number myself personally.
The only thing I can say definitively is if it's going to need the septic system as, as was discussed.
Which it will.
That septic system cost is going to exceed what the cost of the renovations at the truck shop.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I also would like to say, there was a comment made that, that this may be being done because other, you know, there's work that needs to be done at the truck shop. That's clearly not true. If it weren't for doing this, that list of materials, we would not be considering any of that. We, we don't have any plans for a renovation of the truck shop.
Mr. Chairman, I've been trying to think through this process and if one, one of the first place legally that you'd have to start would be, I would have to look at title.
Right.
And second thing would be survey. Survey would have to be done to find, if you can find them, the property boundary line. And I would estimate that the property boundary line survey down there, they would have to, it's probably going to cost you somewhere between.
Twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars?
Yes. I think it's probably somewhere between twenty-five and five thousand dollars. So you may or may not have the ability to build on, you may or may not have the ability to put in a septic tank. And so the price continues with, I mean, you have to do your survey. Uh, then once you do your survey, then you look at options of sewer or, or septic system or building on and doing the pass. I have sort of a faint regulation that is just a very tiny block. Yeah, I think it's extremely tiny and small.
If you build a road right in front of the church, if you want to.
And the church is there and so.
I, I mean, I, I'm at the pleasure of the board. I will open the floor to a motion or agreement of discussion.
It's a board, it's board's pleasure.
Board's pleasure, yes sir.
If I understand during the public comment with her and your comment, Mr. Phillips, with an election, aren't, didn't you say there was an election uh, June twenty-third or something?
Yes.
So our next meeting is June twenty-third. So if we waited till that day to come back with an estimate to make a decision to actually vote on it, then we could, then that precinct may already be faced by the state to be closed and moved.
Well, we can bring Taylor back up there, but it's my understanding that June primaries will be held there no matter what. That's my understanding.
If they have workers.
Yes, they have.
If they have workers.
Yes, they have workers.
And then it may be in an emergency that they don't.
So I don't think it matters. I guess the answer is because my understanding is somebody can correct me, but it doesn't matter what we do tonight. That's not what I think of June twenty-third primary.
Oh, okay.
The primary will be, it should be held one place or the other.
Exactly.
We, this came up last year and it's been a whole nother year and it.
I think the common sense thing, the fiscally responsible thing would be to move it to the truck shop.
In this booklet that she.
That's kind of where I'm at with it, you know.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, yes please.
But in this booklet that she gave to us, if any of us that was new wanted it, it shows eighteen feet, nine inches, twelve feet, nine inches. So it's like a twelve by eighteen or twelve in the height by eighteen foot is all the size of it. I was amazed because I went there in June of last year and worked the caucus election. I was just amazed to go in and there is just a cinder block building with nothing. I mean.
Did we hear any motions or did we want to table it? I mean, we need to, we have to have some sort of action.
I actually go in a cinder block building that actually has nothing.
What is the interest in the pilot?
The church has a, a building that they have bathrooms in and they open them around.
I make a motion, we go ahead and move the truck shop. We've been fighting this for over a year now.
I think you have any choice.
And.
Legal advice and everything else, I think you have any choice.
I just have to say, I know from having to move long sport and then having to travel to people over on Campus Springs. It takes them a good thirty minutes to come to the ridge to vote. Those people basically have quit voting or either they come out and vote a person and it makes a hardship on people to travel that far to vote.
I agree. That's not apples to apples. The roads from Campus Springs to King Ridge, that's really, I wouldn't say it's apples to apples. I'm driving from White Ridge carry out to the truck shop. I don't.
Better roads.
Well, yeah, I think it's not nearly as long. You don't have to go rock out.
She comes from Tevere, she's pretty rough.
Well, that's true. Well, it's tough. This is really tough. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Do you have a second? Let's close the moment.
Time to move it.
Yes.
Who, who made the motion?
I did. Mr. Peters.
I'll send it.
Last good roll call vote, uh, Mr. uh, Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Peters, yes. Ms. Willis.
I'm going to vote now.
Ms. Luck.
Yes.
I'll vote no way. Uh, so the motion passes to move the car pond precinct to the truck shop.
And to Don Fielding.
And to Don Fielding, oh yes. And go to other, excuse me, number eighteen, other business. I think, David, we were going to, had a couple of things. I know you had some.
I do have three things. I don't know if you want to cover anybody else's before mine. That's fine. Uh. If anybody.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
Okay. Uh, the first one I'd like to cover is uh, of just a little bit about the budget and care act. Uh. Of course, for our budgeting process, everything, everything this year was condensed. I mean, that, I think you have pointed out. None of us asked for COVID nineteen and everything that is altered. Typically, we, we do our budgeting process uh, the majority of it in March and April. Of course, the two months that were wiped out more than others are March and April. You also have to remember, the state was called back and did not pass their, their amended budget until April twenty-fourth. So after that, we have to wait for Conboards and other agencies to resend us the numbers that we will receive. So those things were also altered. So to be fair, yes, we were late in the process. We were late in setting all of this up, but the truth of the matter is we held two bu- two budget, budgets, we had, we had one budget workshop with you guys, then we went into COVID nineteen. And our second and third budget workshops were not held until March seventh and March eleventh.
No.
I mean, sorry, May seventh and May eleventh. And that is, Shelby, Ron, you've done this for several years. That is extremely late for us. Extremely late. We typically try to have the majority of the budget put into place by the end of, uh, by the, by the end of April and do some fine tuning into May. Uh, this year's budget process was extremely challenging mainly because, and I will still stand by this. You will see a published budget that, that will be in the paper next week. Uh, we will get that to add at the end of this week. It has, has revenue expenses of twenty-five point three million. What I will say, that first pass this year of doing budgeting, we always have to look at our revenue side first. I mean, that's just, that's just where you have to start. Tax levies are set in March. So we get our, we get our books together. We get all of our local stuff together. We also get all of our things from the state. And our budgeted revenues, as expected, the, when I put it into place the first time, which was after the state got us back our numbers, actually was only about twenty-four point five million. That is extremely low. Uh, most of those have to do with severance, but there, but there's also other factors, you know. We took, we took state cuts in a few areas. Um, it's just sort of a, it's sort of the, you don't want to call it the new normal, but this is not a one-year hiccup. It appears that the numbers that we are facing going forward are, you don't ever like to say permanent in, in my job, but they feel they're definitely long-term. It's not a one-year hiccup. It's not like you've got to tack, just like six, twenty sixteen, seventeen was more about a bankruptcy of, of the main coal company. We were really unsure what the future would look like, but once Contour emerged, we got a basis for the new normal. And that new normal is quite a bit lower than what the old normal was. So within the last four years between, between uh, the coal bankruptcies and hard times and the things that we're experiencing right now, it just appears that, you know, I had written the board back in twenty thirteen and explained to them that I felt like twenty-two to twenty-three million felt like long-term where the general fund budgets needed to be. And we are starting to see the progression of that. And with that comes, the county is reliant on just four sources of revenue. I mean, between real estate taxes, personal property machinery tools, severance, and the state funding of our agencies and our programs, that is roughly eighty-five to eighty-eight percent of our, of our revenue. That means that they're, you know, sales tax based, they're relatively none. Uh, merchants capital based, there's, there's not anything you can rely on. We collect fees for a lot of things that, I mean, those things, there are numbers that add up over the cumulative, but none of them are difference makers. Your difference makers revenue wise are those four categories.
David, how would you describe the financial condition of the county right now?
Well.
I know that you get complicated in, in the cash balance and in the carryover, but what, how much money do we have, would you say, or will we have June thirtieth?
Hopefully by June thirtieth, we will have had a, hopefully a pretty good June collection window. June collection for real estate is stronger than December. Mainly be, mainly because you get a lot of people that go ahead and not just pay their first half real estate, they get to pay their real estate off because the December window has your personal property. So it's kind of a way to break up your, your tax.
How is your mailing? Is it?
The mailing is like.
Everything seems to be on par. I mean, for, for this time, I mean, does it seem to be average or better? Right. But collections are stable.
And one of the differences.
Stable or better than average.
And one of the differences between the twenty-four and a half I told you about and where we ended up twenty-five, three is we modified that real estate collection part of it, because there was a part of me that wasn't sure if, how collections would be. We, we really didn't know. And now that, that it looks more normal, we returned that base back to a more normal look than what it originally had. And what, the way that works is we typically collect seven point three, somewhere between low sevens to seven point three or four in current year real estate taxes. And then with the collection process we've been, we've actually upped over the years. We get three or four hundred thousand of all the taxes. You have people on payment plans. You also have some properties that get put back into so the taxes get caught back up. So you know, we'll, we typically will collect seven point six to seven point eight total in real estate taxes in any given fiscal year. When I first did the budget, I was really unsure if that would eat, if that would be possible. But it appears that that part of the equation is fairly normal. The part where we're not normal is over on the industry side because we're just, we're just coal gas dependent. Gas right now is, is just at what I would consider from, from my time, they're at historic low levels. Our gas severance, right now, we're on pace, I, I think I have a twenty-two or twenty-two year, three-year rolling average that I keep up with. We're on pace to be either twenty-first or twenty-second out of that twenty-three year window. Gas severance is just really way off. And while that's not the same as saying that coal severance being that far off, but I mean, you're talking about the difference between collecting two million dollars in gas severance versus getting seven hundred fifty thousand. You know, that's a million dollar, million plus difference in that. You notice that. Uh, when that's not there, it, it really sticks out in the budget.
You're projecting approximately a million dollars short on gas severance?
Well, this current year we're in, uh, I just posted the April numbers uh, yesterday. We look like we're going to fall this current year about six hundred thousand short on gas, but we're going to end up about six hundred over on coal. So combined, they're going to almost break even with, from a budget standpoint. But on a look forward basis, what we've seen is the trend over the last six, six to nine months is shifting to down. And we're just not sure, and I, I think it's part of the whole thing. We don't know what the national economy is going to look like. Nobody does. I mean, the country's trying to open back up, come back, but I mean, Josh, I think you adequately pointed out. We got a ton of small business people who singularly, they don't make a difference, but collectively, they do make a difference. And your small businesses are the ones that nobody's really sure who's coming back and who's not.
What on, what tax base do we get from the small business?
Well, most of that would show up in your sales and use tax collecting. And our base there is extremely small anyway, and, and Ms. Willis points out, the other one is your merchants capital. That's the two primary merchants.
But I mean, we only get the people in the counties that are outside town. The way that we get some from the.
You get the sales tax.
You collect on sales tax, you collect anything that within the board or.
No, I know what I'm thinking. I'm thinking, so look, I know what I'm thinking of.
But, but see, merchants capital is not a huge number here. It's just not, you don't, you don't have.
I was thinking of.
With that level of inventory, but sales and use tax, we're about seven hundred to seven hundred fifty thousand. As a point of interest, and the city of Norton has a two million to two point five million dollar sales tax.
And our county gives us some.
Yeah, well, we have some of that.
So you, you, your projected revenue, David, I apologize, it was twenty-five point three.
Twenty-five point three. Twenty-five point three is, is what will be published that, that feels, talk about the rubber band, that feels fairly stretched for where we are.
And your projected expenses?
Well, that, we balanced it. We balanced it to twenty-five point three. Uh, and I know that we had discussed, uh, the only alternatives we had were either uh, using one of our reserves. Uh, we have basically three reserves. Uh, there's a debt service reserve that we established back, which provides actually about a one year of judicial centaime. We have thought that is best to save for, for the day when we're still paying that over the next twenty-plus years. We have no idea what coal severance will look like. If it totally went away one day, you would at least have enough protection to pay one year's worth of, of debt service, not going to default. And then you get a year basically to figure out what you pay your. And then you get a year basically to figure out what you're paying, you're going to adjust that to the new normal. We have an insurance reserve that we share with behavioral health and the TSA. We have roughly eight hundred thousand in that, five hundred and some thousand of that is the county. Uh, can only be used for insurance payments. Meaning we could pay our monthly, our monthly premiums. And for us, our monthly's right now are between a hundred thirty and a hundred forty thousand. That's what we pay to our insurance provider to keep our coverage going. Uh, we felt like we would get another return on, uh, cause the reason we get money to put into the reserves is because we're partially self-insured. So when we have a good year, we get a return. But if we have a bad year, then we have to up, up, up money. Well, we've been lucky, three out of four years we've been part of this, we've actually gotten a return. Uh, there was some hesitation among the boards in using that because the five hundred thousand probably represents no better than three months' worth of insurance payments. And again, some of these reserves, we've established them from the sheer fact of what do you do when you have the twenty-two million dollar year? In the twenty-two million dollar year, the county doesn't have a lot of, there's no option.
We're forty-one shutting down from having an eighteen million dollar.
And going back to that, forty-one represents almost sixty-five percent of our coal severance. Now, ten years.
That's before forty-one mine?
Ten years ago, we probably had fifteen to twenty operational mines and no one mine was more than, say, twenty-five percent. Even the biggest, now we're to the point, one mine represents roughly about sixty-five percent of our coal severance. And so that just shows your dependency on, you're out on one limb.
Well, I, I keep hearing this, that's a budget, and I want, I want you to clarify this. They said you were quoted some years, uh, the previous boards where you had a rainy day fine for the first time.
That's your third reserve.
Is this what, okay, how much is in the rainy day fine?
Well, we don't call it rainy days, it's called a general fund balance.
That was in the paper, wasn't it?
Well, they, they say a lot of things that aren't correct.
I mean, it was attributed to the board members.
Okay, but what they, what they talked about is when I first started, the county had a negative five million dollar general fund balance.
They didn't hold five million dollars.
Five million in the hole. We had two million in the bank, and that two million was all coal road money. The coal road money was being used to float the general fund deficit. So over that period of years, Ms. Willis has been here the entire time I have. Mr. Peters has been here the last four, we've been able to move that meter. And going back to Mr. Evans' last question, when we started June first of eighteen, we had eighteen million in the bank, and we had about a five point five million dollar general fund balance. Now, that's what you would consider a reserve. That's about five and a half million. There was also probably, uh, nine or ten million in coal gap, coal road money that goes in. Because the bank account is a shared bank account. All funds collectively go into one bank account. So that when you look at your treasurer's report, that cash in bank represents all the cash on hand that the county has minus a few investments that we hold separately. And those investments, I mean, they're, they're maybe four or five hundred thousand dollars in investments held separately. But for the most part, your cash is in that one account, that cash in bank line item. That number used to be two or three million, that number is now, it was now eighteen million. And we have about five and a half million in, as a general fund balance, which is what people will refer to as a reserve. I will tell you, FY twenty, uh, feels like we're going to be a couple of million short, meaning that we will have to use two million of that reserve to cover our expenditures for FY twenty. Which is, and it's, it's, it's several things.
At least two million, I mean, now only three million.
So what, what I'm projecting right now is that we will have about a three to three and a half million dollar general fund balance, and probably in the neighborhood of fifteen or sixteen million in the bank. But you can see how fluid it is going from one year to the next. Good years, we take advantage of because the bad years are out there. And this has just been one of those bad years. And it's just, it's just the way.
And you feel as if it's not going to get better, we're starting a new trend.
Because before, when we had the year, you could, you could, you could strictly tie it to the alpha bankruptcy because we saw how much they did not pay. And then we got our reports from the bankruptcy court that said, hey, this is what they submitted as far as what you owed. And we did a, a nice job getting our, getting our pennies out of that arrangement. There are other localities that did not, we did. So we rebounded. And one of the ways we rebounded from that was that we waited through the bankruptcy process, the bankruptcy process played itself out, and we got it back. The problem with where we are now is that this is more of a, this is more of a, just an adjustment of how it is going forward. Because when you look at the numbers and you look at the trends, you can't tie it, you can't tie it to bankruptcy. You can't tie it to where we may be able, we won't get it now, but we might get it eighteen months from now. It's not coming. And so I think from what we discussed in our workshop, that mentality was, we have to be able, we're going to have to adjust ourselves as with this. And it's, and it's going to have, it's not easy. It's extremely difficult. Uh, we've been doing downsizing since I've been here. Uh, we, uh, the little pod that I'm in downstairs, we talk about it a lot. I basically have five employees in there now, plus Leland is only doing, basically, he's not even part-time. He does PR and work for me if I need him on a certain, because we're trying to close that project. There used to be nine full-time people. That is now five. And so.
We've eliminated some through attrition of this budget.
We do. And we are going to have to look at long-term. Y'all put a lot of things on the table that we're going to have to explore. You know, going back and looking at the trash thing again. Uh, what are we going to do long-term with fire rescue services? Because we can't continue to maintain the system that we have. Uh, our insurance benefits, how much employees pay to have those benefits? Those are things that we have to look at. And I think that you all are aware of all of those things. And we, we discussed every one of them. I mean, unfortunately, we didn't have more time to really break some of it down. But I mean, you were handed the three new, you're handed a really difficult thing because typically the budget process doesn't work like this. This was very abnormal that we had to be this. You know, it, it, it's just been like immediate response. I hate to say, we got to publish this next week. That's not how this works. So hopefully next year, we can have a new, go back to maybe a little more than normal where we get the chance to sit down with the school division in March. We sit down with the departments and we can talk a lot of this stuff out so that we have time to plan as opposed to, I told you what the problem was, and you basically had three days to fix it. It's not, that's not how it works. But unfortunately, this year, it's the way that it's, that it had to be. I wanted to touch on this CARE Act. We are going to receive, we are slated to receive one million, two hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety dollars. We will actually get the first half of that money at the first of June. However, this is like any federal program that we use. This is federal money that is being distributed to us through the state. So we have, and I think Ms. Willis was the one, I, I sent you all the documents. She points out, there are a lot of strings here, but the one thing that is constant through it all, well, there's two things. Number one, any expenditures that qualify have to be related to COVID-19 and some type of COVID-19 response. The second thing, and it clearly states in here, this has nothing to do with, with helping, uh, make, cannot be used to make up for revenue shortfall. Now, we have, we have petitions through Bayco for that to be reconsidered. Because as Ms. Robinson did point out, we're going to get this money upfront. Typically, this works in reverse. Typically, we have to go expend the money, then apply for reimbursement. We are going to get this money upfront. But. However, there's two things. Number one, there is a strict set of guides. I actually have two while I'll follow those work sessions in the next couple of days, try to help figure out where we can put money and where we're not allowed to. But by December thirtieth, if we haven't had it, if we haven't appropriately expended it, we have to return it.
And also, I think in the case, if we miss appropriate, it'll be taken out, struck out.
If we do something with it, that we, that they later find that it was not an eligible expense, the state has the authority to come back and remove that, those funds from us.
So what are the eligible expenditures?
Well, there is no finite list, but what I can, what I can tie it to things that we've done so far. So far, all of our purchases of cleaning supplies and PPE that we distributed to staff, EMS, sheriff, all that, that stuff is eligible. However, you're not going to talk about a lot of money because a lot of the PPE, which is a personal protect like the mat now. That's the, we did get a lot of stuff donated through VDM and those type. So, but we did expense some money, so we've got all of that. Uh, where you're seeing us construct Plexiglas in a lot of these offices, those are all one of the eligible expenses. We've got all of our materials. We've, uh, we, we've worked with Big Sunglass on a couple of them, all that stuff. Our man-hours will be eligible. So I've got all my maintenance guys keeping charts of how much time they've invested on these projects. We're going to get the reimbursements for that. Uh, I think that the hazard pay that we, that we, that we had set for.
For the dispatchers.
Or garbage.
And the garbage.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think that we might even want to extend that to our sheriff and our EMS guy.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because that, according to that, and I still have to do a little research, and I'm going to get a couple, but I really think that is eligible because it talks about frontline COVID-19 response. And we have a lot of people working from home. We had other people that were working altered schedules, and these people continued their, their, their day-to-day job. They, they, they did their, they did their thing. So, uh, then a couple of other things. We have time, and Rod, you and I talked about this. We're going to have time between now and, say, September to work on projects.
Right, we're going to, the schools, one of them, we're going to have the PSA. We're going to have to look at all the agencies, what they've got.
To see what we might be able to do. I think that there's going to be some focus that if we have to do broadband and Wi-Fi extensions that help out.
And we need to do that.
Then this is the time to do it.
Yeah.
Because if it's got something to do with your COVID-19 response, it's eligible. Now, that's what you read here. We're interested to see how this practically gets applied because so far, there's no eight-hundred hotline you can call. There's not a, there's, it's not like going to a board and saying, can I do this? Right now, we're just going on faith that we can read this, understand it well enough, and make the right decisions on how to do it. But we do hope that there is some clarification, given that it is federal money coming through the state. Surely somebody will help us with a yes, no, kind of a yes-no chart. So we, we do plan to use as much of this as possible. However, as far as being able to put towards helping to budget, I just don't see, I don't see where that happens because everything has to be project-oriented, not operational-oriented. Just because you made an operational change or you have an operational shortfall, we're not eligible to submit that. Even though it is a COVID-19 problem, we're not, it's not eligible. Now, if they change this rule, that'd be great. But right now, there is nothing that indicates they're going to change the rule that. We've said, if you're going to give us the money, and we're all suffering from, from COVID-19 for whatever reason, business shutdowns, all this type of stuff, then why are you telling us we can't? You know, because we, we need the assistance.
One of the things I meant to mention too is the small business grant, I think that makes a lot of difference.
But as far as the CARE Act stuff, this is our, this will be a learning process. We are going to work with all of the agencies as much as we can. But we have a document that we have to submit by Friday. I think, Josh, you, you need to sign it, I have to sign it. Theresa, I had to send it to you because my, unfortunately now, my Adobe on my computer decided to quit working yesterday, and Jeremy still hasn't been able to fix it. So I had sent her a document, but we just have to get that document turned in by Friday. That basically puts us in line saying, yep, we want to accept these funds. Because I do think, there's not a reason, there is no reason not to accept these funds.
Well, and then if this stuff keeps going on, or if it should die down and come back like they say, maybe, then look at how much more are you going to have to?
Right, and as of now, this program is set to end the end of December. If we haven't used the funds through in the new offices, that's not budgeted. There is not anything operationally in our FY twenty-one budget that this CARE Act money is going to help us with. Now, that doesn't mean we won't find projects to work on, to be able to do. But I'm saying from an operational standpoint, because your budget is, has very, well, let's put it this way. There's fifty thousand dollars of capital improvement money in next year's budget, and that's basically to buy a vehicle or two or four lucky.
But there are things that we need to do because this needs to be our statute.
Right.
Our statute all the time from here on.
And as Josh adequately pointed out, we didn't get this letter till May twelfth.
Yeah. If, the, as far as our, like our law enforcement and our first responders, could, could that money be used? Like if they need uniforms or boots? I don't, the way I'm hearing it, you can't use it, it's more of a reimbursable.
I'm hopeful to find that they will be a little more lenient, especially with our first responders.
Yeah.
Because there is concern about, you know, uniforms and, and, and this stuff's, you know, this stuff of wearing masks and having to have your facial, I mean, this is not going to go away because of cost of state reopen. This may be a long-term thing.
No, it's not, we're going to have to stop those.
Well, we may, well, we may have to look at modified vehicles. That's one thing that we've thought about, and we may have to look at.
There's so much in the name of it.
There is, and we don't have a hu, a huge window to, to accomplish it anymore. But the point is, there is not anything in our FY twenty-one budget that I could readily say, okay, we'll apply this and therefore that can offset something that we were going to do otherwise. It's just not in there. But.
Mr. Moore, can I ask you this?
Sure.
I know, I've watched some things that would, that I know that the school system had. They had to pay for sick leave, for family leave.
Yep.
And also, they had to pay unemployment.
Right, so they could use their CARE.
However, they had.
No, they can't use theirs.
Well, now.
Can we use ours for those?
Well, that's part of the thing, their CARE Act money is for one set of things. Our CARE Act money is for another. Ours has a little more user-friendliness as far as unemployment claims, those type of things. So hopefully.
That's why I'm saying, can we use that to help the school with their problems?
But I don't, but I don't see where you can attribute, I don't, I don't see where you could say upfront because an unemployment claim is going to be something that is an FY twenty item. It's going to be between the period of March, whatever date, everything flows through whenever. And again, their situation with COVID is different than ours because we'll probably go back to a bit of a more normal schedule while she hears that they may start next year.
In October.
With all the schedules, which in her world will lead to claims that we don't, we don't see. We, we don't have that. They do. So we're, we're going to have to have a better understanding, and Mr. Barton and Ms. Robinson are going to have to help us while we dig through all of this.
My thing is, in my opinion, they not submit us a deal for their part and let us take it over. Man, can we do that?
Well, we don't know, that's why, we don't, we don't know.
But we need to if we can.
Well, I'm saying, yeah.
They can use theirs.
If, if, if we can, but it's wildly unclear that that, that that's correct.
If we can, that will help them tremendously.
Well, that's one of those things, and again, I'm not, the school is part of it. We just got it, we've got to sit down and define that because at the end of the day, if it gets misdone, wrong.
We're going to pay.
The county's going to be held liable. Yeah. So we've got to be sure we got this.
Yeah, and again, it is very odd to get this money upfront.
Yeah.
And then you could expend it, then later find out, wow. So that wasn't correct. Now we're scrambling because we have to make up.
Well, at least with like the BGP programs, I've helped some clients with that. I mean, as long as you use seventy-five percent on payroll, it's basically for.
There are, there are parts of this I think are very clear, there are other parts of this that are.
Anybody else have any?
Mr. Chairman, can I just, yes, to echo something that the county administrator, I've also reviewed the document. There is, there is a. There is, there is a, there is a general guideline for spending this money. And there's several of them. There is no specific guideline or direction on what may or may not qualify. You can't, in my opinion legally, you can't put your county administrator in it to, to commit money that he doesn't know that he.
I agree with that.
Yeah. And legally, from a legal point of view.
There's just enough information to be a wish list.
We're worried about that.
Yeah, make sure.
He's got, I think the county administrator, you gotta give him a chance to do his research, do questions, determine what may or may not be eligible.
We have to adopt a budget, but we can certainly adapt, I think.
We can only amend your budget.
Yeah, we can amend our budget and follow if necessary, you always, yeah.
So, I'm just saying.
I agree with everything you're saying.
At this time, I cannot see making any budget changes for FY-21, because there's just way too much uncertainty in what, how this stuff can be applied.
I'll tell you, the other thing I'm worried about is that we haven't, we have to do our own research to make sure we cover everything we do.
And we will, and I, I, to be honest, this is far more than I can do by myself. I'm gonna have to have a lot of help.
I'm sure they're gonna have to.
And, you know, this is, gotta remember, this is in addition to the day job. I got the day job, and then I got all this.
And that's why I said, it's gonna involve talking to the school, talking to PSA, talking to all the agencies, and let's get it all gathered up.
To wrap this part of, what I do need, I need you all, I, I'd like you to signify by vote that you want to accept it. I think it's a no-brainer.
I think it is.
Your motion?
We did a motion to accept the million dollars?
Yes, Mr. Peter.
Well, I have to submit a document that we're all signing, and I'd rather you all say yep.
A man motion, so.
I agree with you.
Oh, yeah, I second it.
All those in favor of accepting the CARE Act monies, please signify by saying aye. Aye, aye also.
Okay, that, next thing.
Uh, who made the motion?
The next thing would be to talk about our, we've been on altered schedule for the last six weeks. Um, I know that Virginia has done their phase one, and their phase one has no real impact to what, to what we do. It's more of applicable to businesses, but, uh, I guess when we went to altered schedule, basically, we did, we never shut down, but we did, we did do modified office hours, we did modified staggered work schedules, we have people working from home. I guess my question is, you know, we feel like we're, we're coming upon the reopening. I, my initial thought was to wait till June tenth, but, you know, let's knock on wood, our town has been very, very fortunate, had zero reported cases, positive cases. Uh, I've had questions from several of you about reopening. I guess my thoughts would be, we either use, uh, the day after Memorial Day, June, July, June first or June tenth as one of the dates to, to, because we need to reestablish, to establish a reopening, where we go back to regular office hours and when we would have the doors open to the public. Now, I'm, I'm gonna call on Angie here, because I had a conversation with Angie, and if it was your desire to not have your office doors open to the public through the collection period.
So, there is really no possible way that we can safely, um, specifically, I mean, you don't have to go online with, and I'm not guaranteeing people have been around to see, but we sometimes have lines in hallways. There is no way to safely practice that permission to be on that deadline. Um, we are offering, of course, uh, to add payrolls, add on our payrolls, uh, to all kinds of calls, and, and I hate that there's inconvenience to, of, but there's inconvenience to everywhere you go. I mean, each day, we do not get a line at the line, so one of the girls at line is trying, you know, for thirty minutes trying to get her dropped, and, um, the mail is coming in, right? Um, while people call me in by credit cards, and I, a lot of older teenagers, I understand, lots of have a standard paper set. We have told people that they can send in their old tax papers, send in a self-adjacent envelope, who can pay the pain, you know, a vacuum, uh, who offer them a place, I've, I've made phone calls. I mean, you know, we're working with people, but I just feel like that we cannot safely open any practice for the distance here on that deadline.
Or I have noticed, being out in public, that people are doing the social distances without being asked. They are doing that themselves. I've had three people call me wanting to know how they can pay their taxes in cash. And I advise them, do not to be in a box, because you have no record on.
Or in the blow.
And I just think that it's time that we open our offices back in.
I agree. I would, I would like the doors open tomorrow, myself. I mean, you, you're a constitution officer, I can't tell you how to run your office, but I, I want, my desire was for these doors to be open.
I think we can control if they're not gonna open. I don't think we need to pay our employees to work in those offices.
I link it to her.
My office personally has not been any day, I am at school staff. We are working, that's what, uh, funny, you know, it's called, is that we use the middle down there, not down court that? Uh, we are working in part of doing whatever, um, but, and I feel like if the building is open, and people can be in the building, the best thing to do in that office, they're gonna be in the house. But I am not opening my office though until we can do that for the public, so.
But, I mean, that's, that's a, you have that, you're the legislature, you can do that, but I'll be hard to open.
I don't want it.
Mr. Chairman, may I, from the standpoint of Executive Order sixty-one? If you open up prior to that date, you're still bound by Executive Order sixty-one, you know? If you open the doors up, then there's gonna be, you're gonna have, in my opinion, you give authority to the county administrator to put in place certain types of practices and procedures to protect the office workers.
I think, I think we do need to protect our employees.
Well, here's the question, I got.
We've all got Plexiglas, that's for monitoring.
Are we required to ensure they have masks when they come in?
Yes, you, I think that's something that you, you can require that, see, now, this, this we're getting into is specific. I think you're gonna plead it to your county administrator to do what he needs to do, I don't.
And that's fine with me, but I want the doors open.
Because I, well, I, I've had to go to the store to get milk and stuff like that for the babies, and I, I haven't seen, I see some people wearing masks.
Well, our office, our office does not, won't have Plexiglas. Teresa, Teresa's.
Teresa, and I think Karen, because Karen deals with our employees.
Well, Teresa's the frontline employee, she's the person, she said when he walked through the door, right there. Karen, of course, has an office, Cindy has an outside office, you know, so that's, that creates a little different scenario. I, and we want, we still are bound to, we can't have the ten, you know, that, that typically is not an issue for us, but Mr. Phillips actually points out, I, I think if we're going to do this, we should have a rule, if you enter our building, you have to wear a mask, and if you don't, we have the right to ask you to find one or, or not.
I find it's me.
Or not.
Risk management.
I mean, we're gonna have to have some rules, but again, it goes back to date. Uh, the three that make the most sense are the next Tuesday, that's Tuesday after Memorial Day, the first of June, or the, or you wait till the tenth. Uh, we're not getting any guidance from the state, state, that, that's out, that, that just forgets.
Well, we do need to get to where we open, but, but I, but we also have to have some things in place.
Um, well, I mean, we had a courtroom full of people, Jeremy was there, I mean, everybody's going back to work, folks, okay? That's, I mean, that's, it's.
I think we need to go back to work, but I think all our employees that are out in the public needs to be protected as with the Plexiglas.
We, we had court, just a normal day today, so I don't know that we, that's just my opinion, obviously, but I, I think we need to open it. You'd be proud of it.
Were they wearing masks and?
No, some of them were, but.
Social business thing?
Even in the grocery store, not everybody wore a mask in all.
It was, I mean, it was, I thought it was fine, I mean, everybody was acting appropriate.
Well, now, if we, if your office open, and Angie's not gonna have ours open, and the, and a person comes in and says, I got cash money and I wanna pay my taxes, are they gonna be able to leave it with you?
Absolutely not.
See, I, I, and again, I don't, I'm not criticizing, she's a constitutional officer, she can do whatever she wants.
What's the other?
I, I, if somebody's bringing the county money, I just, that's, I don't like that. I don't know, they're trying to give us their harder money. I agree, you're right.
That's what security is, inconvenience and a cost.
That's what taxes are, is inconvenience.
You know, well, no, but that's, you know, it's the same thing, you gotta risk management and, and that's your office.
It's our office, whatever's involved.
Thanks for that question, Mr. Chairman, that's true, a constitution officer is created by the constitution, the net of Virginia. You have the treasurer, you have the commissioner, you'll have the clerk, and you also have the sheriff's office.
And the Commonwealth attorney.
The Commonwealth attorney. And all of those offices have the authority to determine who, who, who actually.
I agree.
The only thing that you're probably focusing on is a, is your fore-office man. That's the only thing we're discussing right now.
I think mine's not open at least.
But I guess, Mr. Phillips. It's sort of interrelated in, which is not this scenario, but they couldn't open unless we opened them. You see what I'm saying? We'd have to open our doors and then open their doors.
Correct.
Is that gonna be aggravated if people come in and start, if we open up the board supervisor's office and people start coming in? They're gonna travel down these halls, and we're gonna be far off.
Well, this is a taxpayer I work on.
That's, I'm just looking, I'm just looking at one of the problems.
No, I mean, for your employees, there.
Well, let's just, you know, but that, I don't think we open it without Teresa having protection.
Public walk-in, our office.
No, we'll have that before.
David, David, because we can do it or not.
Basically, if they do your Plexiglas, um, dealing with.
I think you are too, that's why I want to hear of why some other offices.
What we want.
Yeah, it's, yeah, they. Oh, well, they actually installed it, did David measure it and stuff or something, maybe he didn't, I don't know.
Alan was the one that assisted.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, glasses.
Yeah, Alan assisted them with all the legwork, and they actually came and did.
So couldn't he not do the same for your office?
Well, we only have that one public, I mean, and that, that Teresa's, and you look at how she's set up, I mean, we don't have counter. She's out of debt, so are we gonna just enclo, enclose that, you know?
Can you push that?
You talk about that, I do have a question.
We would put that Plexiglas in place, you know, so we need to make sure of putting it the way we want it.
Oh, we're doing it right first.
Yeah, that's true, I agree. I'm not saying it isn't, I'm just, I've seen a little bit of it, I don't remember. Yeah.
All right, guys, it's, it's nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion on this, or do we, what, what do we wanna do?
Open it up.
Correct.
I think we open our office as soon as we can get Plexiglas up around Teresa. And are you gonna consider Karen, because Karen deals with the employees in the county?
I would ask Karen, I think she could just do bipolar or something, I mean, couldn't she?
The people with the offices, I feel like's a little different, you don't get the walk-in. They will be there to see her, but she can keep one person at a time, one, one person at a time. I, I, and again, I, I'll leave it to her. If Karen says I'd like to have, I'll do it. If Karen says I think that's a little too much, I don't need that, I think that's a personal preference. It's a walk-in, it's where you can't control who's coming through that door, and they're gonna go right to her. And I, what I, the, the one thing that I'm, and it's not fearful, it's not the right word, but the thing I'm most concerned about is if we've got everybody on different opening schedules, and we open the bill, because if we open our office, we're opening the front doors.
We can't control that.
I know, we're opening the front doors, we're gonna spend the majority of our time answering questions, why they can't go down to her office and, and, and make a payment.
But we're doing that anyway, I'm doing that anyway.
Well, we, I know, but we were trying to keep, we were trying to keep everything on the same, on the same schedule. But I've been approached by several of you, oh, let's open it back up, that's why I'm putting it in front of it. You say next Tuesday, you need to open those doors, that's what we'll do.
Say, open it tomorrow. I get your question.
I can't, I can't, I can't give her, I can't give her anything by tomorrow.
And, Mr. Moore, I think we should work with the commissioner's office and protect those people if we need to or if they need.
Their stuff is already, materials are ordered, we just haven't been able to get them yet, because amazingly, some of this stuff is not extremely easy to find, and their office setup is different. I mean, everybody's office setup's different, that's counter, the commissioner's office is different. So whatever we're doing with the commissioner, we can give to Teresa, but the problem, of course, is timing, you know, getting that.
A lot of places we actually voted to, to close them, I thought we'd basically.
Well, you left it to me, but since you all came to me and said, let's get on reopening it, it kinda took my initial thought, which was June tenth using it, I've accelerated it back, and I'm just saying, whatever, whatever, whatever you wanna do, we will do. I'm not trying to be obstructionist here.
I'm not saying that you are, I, I, I just.
Having had no cases in the county gives us a different feel than everybody else. I, I, that's.
I'm not saying that you are being that way, David, I just completely believe.
David, I would suggest that you open as soon as we can protect Teresa.
That's, I agree with that.
It's out of boundary, we're good with that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I'm not, he's gonna have to have Plexiglas, for example.
I agree.
There is, there is, as long as sixty-one's in place, he cannot allow more than ten people in that building at one time.
No.
Number ten people come down, the question is how do you police that? You gotta read that to your county administrator to determine. Secondly, uh, there's gonna have to be an opportunity to protect, um, your frontline people within that office, and it's gonna take him a little while to get that plan put in place and get the materials. Uh, everybody else is doing this, all that material is in short supply, every, all the offices, all the businesses, all are asking for the same material. And so, I'm guessing there potentially gonna be a two, to three, to four-week lag before you can get the material to protect her. I just might guess.
Yeah.
I mean, the town hall starts Thursday, it's never.
The class was a beat up.
Let, let us just see what we can do. I, hers is a given, I will ask Karen and Cindy how they feel, they do get walk-ins, Cindy gets walk-ins, Karen gets the most. But, uh, we'll work, we'll work it out, and as soon as we can safely reopen our office, that's when we'll open the front door. And I don't, it's gonna be a longer period than what we think it could be, I'll let you know.
You, you know, do you bring it from?
Yes, I would like this about that van that we discussed, we didn't vote on.
That was item three.
Oh, I didn't know.
Oh, another business.
No, we're still, we're still, we're still in limbo that, that, the, you're talking about the rescue, the rescue van. I actually thought Jeremy might mention it when he was here, but he didn't.
No, he didn't, they did.
We're gonna, we have to decide one way or another, and the, the details remain the same. Clintwood is getting a new unit, they say they will be approaching us for twenty thousand dollars as a grant match. They are asking eighteen thousand dollars to sell this, this van to Sandy Ridge Rescue. If they do that, they won't ask us for any, anything. I've been told there is upwards of fifty thousand dollars of equipment and, and supplies in that van, if they are willing to also let.
We'll, we'll be waiving their twenty-five thousand in this budget, is that what you're saying?
Well, the thing is, we were gonna give twenty-five, we, you know, our annual appropriation to Sandy Ridge, and, and all the others, twenty-five thousand.
But they hadn't got that.
He, he, no, he is committed, but he's not, they haven't been eligible, we gave them the TNT. We haven't given them anything for next year. However, Jeremy had alluded to, he would be willing to take less of an appropriation next year to kinda all help us offset here, so what I could propose would be, if we do this purchase for them, well, then Clintwood has their match money, Sandy Ridge gets their vehicle plus the supplies that are in it, and we can reduce Sandy Ridge's appropriation next year by, I was going to propose ten thousand, give them fifteen thousand instead of twenty-five thousand.
They will have to have some operating vans to work with.
Did we ever get any members on their call volume?
Uh, Richie did, Richie did, Richie did bring some, and what you're gonna have to recognize is, and I, I meant to bring this up, under the previous regime, they had actually asked their call area to be restricted.
Who did say that?
Well, that did happen, that was, that was, that was real. He says he wants to go and reinstate it to what it used to be, because he's trying to do it right, and I, and I think we should do whatever we can to try to help.
I think that's a fair try.
I did tell him, he had to go to Wise County, he, he's already set the meeting up, I spoke to the Wise County Administrator, that meeting is set up, that's all, that's all.
And I agree with him, like we'd act. And have three of them. Like we'd ask the bank statements and all that stuff.
He's, he's brought those.
Everything looked good on that.
He's been toe, I, he has been as upfront as he possibly could be. He's, everything we've asked him to do, he's done.
We just gotta get a grip on this. I mean.
We gotta get our arms around the whole situation with all this, but as far as helping them, I know they really need this, this vehicle, so.
I'm dead with it.
They haven't had a vehicle on the road all week.
I make a motion we.
All we can.
I think it's a good, good swap, myself.
It's well worth, it's well worth trying to help him because I'm telling you, he is really making an A-plus effort to try to get this thing back up and running.
Yeah, we have your motion to slow.
That we, with the van, that we purchased the van in the lower, I mean.
Use ten thousand of their.
They used thousands of their appropriation to.
Their FY twenty-one to cover.
FY twenty-one to cover.
Your second.
I'll say it. Oh, go ahead.
Although, that's a real second, I guess.
Yeah.
Let her make the motion.
Are you doing that?
I don't mind, okay. I think it's a good deal. Obviously, nothing wrong with it.
All right, so we have a motion in the second to execute the agreement for the ambulance from Clintwood Rescue to Sandy Ridge Rescue. All those in favor, please signify the saying aye.
Aye.
I also, any other, any other other business?
I finally, at the end of the hour, we got that.
All right, so we're going to item nineteen.
May I ask my lawyer?
Yes.
No. Is it any way possible we can go anyhow with our school budget or not?
Wow.
I think that, I think that, I mean, that's a tough consideration. Other than, other than utilizing a reserve or adding revenue from somewhere, I, I, we, it took everything we could to balance it, as is.
Where's our public hearing on the board?
June fifteenth.
Well, I personally for going up a little bit.
It could be. It doesn't help their situation. I know they've done a donation process and they have to go through, I mean, this is just a reality.
It is. It's something that's gonna keep getting worse and worse in the chair.
Is it appropriate to make a, a motion now on the other business?
Uh, not on the agenda. You'd have to amend your agenda.
Well.
There's agenda, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Other than our, can you turn?
Well, she, she said, can we go up on our budget? Can, can we do that, bud?
You would have to have a motion to amend your agenda, and the agenda would have to be amended appropriately reflected in your, your minutes.
Who can do it on budget?
And then, then you would have to have the opportunity to have a motion, a second, and go forward.
Well, we can do that.
It's something that you have now.
As part of, as part of your act of doing that, though, you have to give me the offset. Because you can't, you can't just tell me to.
When we have our public hearing, are we?
And not tell me how you intend to balance it because I've gotta have an idea of what, how, how I'm supposed to accomplish that.
I, I, I'm ready to move to item nineteen. If, if somebody wants to make a motion and try to, the time to amend the agenda is passed, but I'll record our longer on whether or not that's permissible, and I'll go with his recommendation.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that rather than make a decision at this point, I think the better, of course, would be to complete your, your motion, your agenda tonight. And then, or the member to discuss with your county administrator. And he is exactly right. If you have a motion to increase, you're gonna have to have a motion to find the money and decrease somewhere else. You gotta have the balance.
And that's not realistic if it's.
And so that can be done anytime through an emergency meeting. And under COVID, you don't, you're not required to, to go through the regular motion, the regular process of advertising, emergency meetings you can have though. And so you can have an emergency meeting anytime that you wish prior to the date of dropping the budget, uh, to do that. And I think you need to, in my opinion, work with the county administrator from a legal standpoint, so that he keeps, he's, he's forced to have a balanced budget. He can't present you enough.
And it goes to April Friday. Yeah. All right, so we're moving, is there anything else?
David, did you get all your three in? Did you get all your three in?
Yes, I, I got my three done.
Moving on to item nineteen. Is everyone ready to go to item nineteen?
I am.
All right. Everybody in here? Uh, anything to motion to go to closed meetings at this point?
I'll make a motion to move to closed meetings pursuant to Virginia Code Section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven eight, five and seven. Section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven eight, five, Project Five Hundred Economic Development. Section two dot two thirty-seven eleven eight, seven, ongoing active litigation school project.
You're a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of, uh, moving to closed session pursuant to the code section, uh, pursuant to code section to move rate by Mr. Peters, please signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, well. We're moving to item twenty on the agenda.
I'll certify that.
We're coming out.
In closed session, we already discussed those items. Got it. Pursuant to Virginia Code Section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven eight, five and seven. Section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven eight, five, Project Five Hundred Economic Development. And Section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven eight, seven, ongoing active litigation school project.
So you're a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Miss Kaiser. Do you vote in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Ms. Will?
Yes.
Ms. Sluss?
Yes.
Yes, for me also. Now, I guess we'll move to item twenty-two.
Now, Mr. Chairman, is there any, any motions or resolutions coming out of this?
I'm sorry, correct. Uh, like, are there any motions, uh, coming out of closed section that matters discussed in closed section?
Do we need to make a motion for the?
Resolution that.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Let me have, get a copy of that resolution.
You talking to Project Five Hundred?
No.
No.
This is on.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution presented by our attorney.
You're a second?
Uh, do you wanna read it before or do you read?
Can I, can I, what I need to do is make a brief explanation.
Please, yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, you have a resolution that is for you, for your consideration. And what this resolution seeks to do is to make sure that the Dickerson County Board of Supervisors takes care of their legal responsibilities, that they are in fact supporting the public school construction of the new, of the new elementary school. And basically what this board is attempting to do is to divide out responsibilities of the school board, responsibilities of the board of supervisors. As a result of that, this resolution, uh, in front of you, uh, seeks to address an issue that came up at the board of supervisors at the last meeting. It dealt with certain mitigation work that was related to the new high school. And this resolution appropriates two hundred fifty thousand dollars to be used on the two projects. One is the Spring Fork issue, and the other is on, uh, the renovation on the Clear River, uh, shore issue. And so that does, and also makes available the monitoring money. So it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars that you're allowing to be appropriated out of the QSCAB funds held in a joint account. And that would be from the school board's portion of that fund. The second thing that it will do, there's some issues about the use of credits. And what we're trying to do is unwind all the entanglements of the school board and the board of supervisors for the last ten years. And one of the things this board is going on record is that doing everything that they can in a fair way and a wise way to ensure that their schools are being constructed. Uh, as a part of this resolution, you have agreed to allow the school board to receive any, uh, what is called credits that's being held by the Corps at the current time, that's somewhere between probably an estimate of between five seventy-five and six hundred thousand dollars, to be used for school construction work. These monies won't materialize, and it's probably not gonna help them build their elementary school, but they feel like they should have these monies back. It's my understanding that about two hundred eleven thousand dollars of credit did come from the elementary school, and the balance of that money did come from the county's work that they did on building the road and got credit for building the road. Uh, and so the board of supervisors is allowing that to move over to the school board's, uh, credit. And, but it only will come about, uh, when and if that money is made available by the Corps, and maybe many years. There is a caveat to this resolution. There is a condition. That when we do, uh, paragraphs one and two of this resolution, giving them two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and when we're giving them the credit, they must relinquish and make immediately payable to us six point nine billion dollars out of the QSCAB money. That is part of the condition. Conditions, the two things that you, the two issues that you have allowed to go forward, cannot go forward until they do, uh, allow us to move forward with six point nine million dollars of money that will come to the county, and that's what's there for your consideration.
Mr. Peters, I believe you want to make a motion.
Yeah, I made, I made a motion that we move forward with, uh, our attorney's recognition with this resolution.
Uh, you're a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, I, I do wanna discuss that.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
And I apologize.
No, no, no.
I would've done this downstairs. I didn't think of it. The recurring money. That's to monitor it for how many years?
Ten.
And is that money always can be spent that way? Is it colored?
It, it would be, well, it was colored by the group because that is a rigid view, ongoing mitigation expense. You, you have to construct a mitigation field.
But is it colored when we give it to them so that it's not only be spent on that?
Yes, it, it, it should specify that this fifty million dollars is for ten years of, of mitigation.
Fifty thousand dollars.
I don't remember the term, uh.
They're acquired, they're acquired by the Corps of Engineers to monitor it.
Monitoring.
They're acquired by the Corps to monitor all the mitigation.
I'm always that math is, cause you're giving that money, is it going to them?
designated for that, yes, yes.
And what ties it so that it only can be used for that?
This resolution.
Okay, I just wanna make sure of that.
That's a good question.
Yeah. That was, sorry, I didn't think of that downstairs.
Is there any other discussion regarding the resolution? Have a motion in second. All those in favor, please signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, also. So I guess we need to go to twenty-two, scheduling a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to schedule public hearing for board supervisor salary ordinance, June the twenty-third, two twenty at five fifty P M.
You're a second?
Second.
All those in favor, fifteen, five, the same aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, as well. Item twenty-three, supervisor comments? Mr. Peters doesn't have any, will?
Uh, you know, when Riegel came up, I was discussing this with Mr. Phillips to look into it cause I, I honestly, I can't remember everything. I've been bogeyed on it. I meant to go back and look at it, and I didn't have time today to go back and pull my boots and look. But I was talking to him. I wasn't, uh, having anything drawn towards to them at all. I just wanted to know, did they do it on draw or did we make it, or did we vote on it? And it turned out we did vote on it. So I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
Miss Kaiser?
I don't think so, but I was talking to Mr. Phillips.
I guess I'm probably glad that there's some movement and that we can get busy on other stuff and settle down and, and, and I think the five of us have, have come a long ways to work pretty good together. I, I'm very appreciative of that.
You're good.
I agree, hey, and I hope it can move forward, and that's a promise, I can move forward and we're here to do what's best for the county and, and, and for the citizens of this town and the children of this town.
I echo that very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I've been here pretty much, you've asked me to come and to help you, and I have, I have seen and witnessed a lot of things that you're doing right, a lot of wise decisions that you made. The biggest thing that I've seen is the cohesion that I see in this board now and willingness to work together to try to move the county forward. And I commend each one of you for that, and I'd say that sincerely. That you all are, are attempting to make good decisions, you're trying to make wise decisions, you're seeking information, and to really make decisions. And the big thing that the public is looking for is they would like to work together as a unit professionally, and you all have been doing that, and I, I commend you for that.
Thank you very much.
And we thank you for everything that you've done, Mr. Phillips.
I agree, uh, we, uh, we couldn't have a better ambassador, uh, for the taxpayers of this county and for the Corps. And I appreciate your diligence in trying to bring the school board litigation to an end. That's being an elephant in the room since Sandy worked first, when three of us took office for the first time, and then, of course, Mr. Peters and Ms. Will for taking the third or fourth time, Ms. Will. Uh, thank you. Moving forward, I want to say that each of the members of the school board are, are all men who I hold in high regard as individuals. And I don't know that you could pick any five better men to be on a board as far as their educational background, their business background, and their family background. I hope that we as two boards can, you know, what I feel is being the dark black cloud in the county for going on three years now. And I feel like I'm physically and mentally exhausted with the litigation. I've earnestly tried with all of our board and all of their board and trying to stay within the confines of the law to reach some sort of resolution for this litigation that benefits the children and families and taxpayers of this county. And it just seems like it will not go away. The more, the more we try, it seems like the worse it gets. But I feel like this resolution tonight is as fair and is as equitable and is kind of the last straw to end this. I feel like we have come as far as we can go to try to end the litigation and allow a school to be built for our children in Dickerson County, and to allow the school board to do their job. Uh, you get antagonistic, and I, and I do, I get frustrated, and I, and frankly, I'm exhausted. I really am. I'm, I, I enjoy this. I enjoy helping and try to help the community, but it's been, it's been exhausting. But I am proud of our board in coming together and trying to do what Ms. Sluss said, and then echo Ms. Kaiser, what we believe is right for Dickerson County, and that's, that's all we can do. And I hope that the public can at least acknowledge our efforts in that, and I appreciate each of you all. I tried to move the agenda fast as I could. We're still here past ten. Appreciate David and Teresa and Mr. Phillips. It's been a long day. Appreciate Jeremy and Scotty for staying here with us. But at this point, I'll, uh, I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Jeremy.
You're a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of adjourn, I'd signify the same aye.